I'll call this meeting of the Uba City Council to order on May 18th, 2021. Have some information to read. The governor has declared a state of emergency to existing California as a result of the threat of COVID-19. The governor also issued Executive Order N 3320, which directs Californians to follow public health directives, including canceling large gatherings. The executive order also allows local legislative bodies to hold meetings via conference calls while still meeting state transparency requirements. The public's health and well-being are the top priority for the city of Uba City, and you are urged to take all appropriate health and safety precautions. This meeting is utilizing the Zoom application for this live broadcast. For this meeting, we will be using the question and answers functionality of this tool in order to accommodate public comment. On your device, the question and answer section of the app is located at the bottom of your Zoom screen. For those who would like to comment during this meeting, please enter your comment into the question and answers portion of the app, and be sure to state the item you will be commenting on during the public comment of each item. Staff will read aloud the comments provided by the public for all to hear for that specific items. May I have roll call, please?
Mayor Boomgarden.
Here.
Vice Mayor Shaw.
Here.
Councilmember Espendola.
Here.
Councilmember Harris.
Here.
Councilmember Kirchner.
Here.
The city council will be adjourning into closed session. At this time, I'd invite the city attorney to please read those closed session items.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There are three items scheduled for closed session. First one is closed session item A, Conference Labor Negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6. Agency-designated representatives are Dave Vaughn, City Manager, Natalie Springer, Human Resources Director, Brad McIntyre, Community Services Director, Spurrenson Morrison, Finance Director, Diana Langley, Public Works Director, Michael Jarvis, LCW, Jack Hughes, LCW, Employee Organizations, the Uba City Police Officers, Police Sergeants, Uba City Firefighters, Local 3793, Uba City Fire Management, First Level Managers, Mid-Managers, Police Department Managers, and Public Employee, Local Number One. Unrepresented employees or confidential employees, executive services employees. Closed session item B is threats to public services or facilities pursuant to Government Code Section 54957, subsection A, consultation with City Attorney and/or the Fire Chief, Police Chief, Director, and Public Works and City Manager. The final item is closed session item C, Conference of Legal Counsel, Existing Litigation, Government Code 54956.9, Diana Barrett versus City of Uba City at All, CVCS 20-0001102. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeking any comments from the public, seeing no public here. Sierra, do we have any comments?
No public comments.
Okay. Council will be moving to its closed session. We will return at the end of the closed session for the meeting, starting at 6:00. Always again, nice to see people in the audience. I'd like to go ahead and call this a regular meeting of the Uba City Council for May 18th, 2021 to order. Have a few messages to read. The governor has declared a state of emergency to existing California as a result of the threat of COVID-19. The governor also issued Executive Order N 3320, which directs Californians to follow public health directives, including the canceling of large gatherings. The executive order also allows local legislative bodies to hold meetings via conference calls while still meeting state transparency requirements. The public's health and well-being are a top priority for the city of Uba City, and you are urged to take all appropriate health and safety precautions. This meeting is utilizing the Zoom application for the live broadcast. For this meeting, we will be using the question and answers functionality of this tool in order to accommodate public comment. On your device, the question and answer section of the app is located at the bottom of your Zoom screen. For those that would like to comment during this meeting, please enter your comment into the question and answers portion of the app, and be sure to state the item you will be commenting on. During the public comment of each item, staff will read aloud the comments provided by the public for all to hear for that specific item. Be timely with your questions, as once the public hearing is closed, or the item has been discussed by the council and voted on, no more comments will be accepted for that item. May I have roll call, please?
Mayor Boomgarden.
Here.
Vice Mayor Shaw.
Here.
Councilmember Espendola.
Here.
Councilmember Harris.
Here.
Councilmember Kirchner.
Here.
All right. Next item is our invocation inspiration. We are joined tonight by Pastor Dan Callahan, First Baptist Church of Uba City, also Sutter County Sheriff's Chaplain. It will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, so please remain standing. And Chairman of the Board, Dan Flores, will lead us in the pledge.
Counselor Paul, on behalf of First Baptist Church and our community, I just want to thank you for leading our community with grace and wisdom during this time. Let's pray. Father, thank you for this time that we can meet. I pray that you would give this council and our city officials wisdom as they guide our city. Thank you for their families. Pray that you keep them safe and healthy. Lord, I pray that you would just give our first responders safety as they reach and protect our families while we sleep and while we serve you each and every day. I pray that you would just help us and guide us through our thoughts, our ways, and our actions. Lord, thank you for the city, a city that's guided by you. I pray that you bless this time, give us wisdom, in Christ's name. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance of the great nation. Salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is the city attorney's report on the closed session items.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There was no reportable action taken in closed session.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Agenda modifications and approval of the agenda. I have two notes before I turn over the council for anything else. We were going to issue a proclamation for the grateful nation remembers. That has been rescheduled to our next regular meeting on June 1st. Also, I have moved item number 17, which is the Boggs Stewart Master Plan, Master Tax Exchange Agreement with Sutter County. It will be moved to our first item of business this evening, just before item number 10. Are there any other agenda modifications, or shall we approve it? Looks like we're approving it. Okay. Next up is a presentation about State Route 99 at Live Oak Boulevard. This will be presented by Johnny Tan, Caltrans District 3 Project Management. This will be virtual.
Good afternoon, everyone. Can you hear me?
Not yet. Little louder. That might be on our end.
What about now? Can you hear me now? Does it sound better now, or?
Give us one more sound check, sir.
All right. Can you hear me?
That'll work.
Okay. I'm trying to speak as loud as I can. Thank you all, and thanks, Uba City Council members, for giving us opportunity to present and share our proposed interim safety projects and countermeasure at the intersection of Highway 99 at Live Oak and Encinal, also known as the Lomo Railroad Crossing. I also would like to thank you, the community, for the patience and the cooperation. My name is Johnny Tan, Caltrans District 3 Project Manager. I have here four members of our Caltrans family joining us. Ed Javaro, our traffic safety engineer; Teresa Limone, our traffic operation; Kelly McNally, our environmental senior; and Gilbert Mohit Chan, he's our public information officer. There are continued collision at this intersection, and we do need to address safety. As you know, larger capital projects could take a very long time doing various phases of planning, design, and construction. Caltrans is currently studying various alternatives for a permanent safety improvement at this intersection. We are evaluating traffic patterns, environmental property, and community impact. This project is in the early project approval and environmental phase, and is planned for construction in summer 2024. But for the immediate timeframe, we are proposing an interim safety countermeasure to improve safety and operation at this intersection. Mr. Javaro will be going over the interim projects in detail. This interim project was planned and coordinated with Sutter County and Uba City Public Works, and we are very appreciative to have their support of this interim project. This project is scheduled for construction on May 24th, coming up next Monday, and it is anticipated to take three to five days to complete. Our outreach campaign has already begun. An advertisement was in the Peel Democrat message boards were placed two weeks ago on State Route 99, Live Oak Boulevard, Encinal Road, alerting commuters for the changes. Caltrans traffic alerts, news release were also sent out. We also presented this interim project to city council members of Live Oak and Sutter County Board of Supervisor. So at this time, I would like to welcome Mr. Ed Javaro. He's our traffic safety engineer. Will go over the presentation on the slideshow of the project. Ed? Ed, are you there? Ed, you ready to present and share your presentation? Ed is on the line there.
Which one is his? What's his username?
Ed Javaro. Does Clerk have the presentation loaded up on the screen?
Yes, she does.
Yes.
Okay. Ed's supposed to be presenting this. Let me see if here I can walk you through real quick. Hold on a second here. I'm sorry. Oh, Ed just called me, said he was muted on Teams. So can you unmute him, please? Somebody?
He's actually in the Zoom call. If he needs to present, he should be through, connecting through Teams.
You are on the Zoom. You need to join Teams. Huh?
He said he is connected through Teams.
Okay, you might have to join again, Ed.
Yeah, Ed's not on the list. He's not joining the Teams meeting.
He said he's on Teams, but he's gonna try to join it. Let me present here what I have. I have a back through the slideshow. As you can see on your screen, the Lomo Crossing intersection, Live Oak Boulevard, Encinal, and State Route 99, this intersection. So from 2016 to 2018, there were 34 collisions. Of the 30 multi-vehicle collision, 13 were broadside, 11 rear-ended and one side swayed. These are indicative of intersection-related collision. And broadsides tend to be more severe to the vehicle occupancy. Five were southbound 99, trying to make a left turn onto Live Oak. Seven were trying to cross between Live Oak and Encinal. One was trying to make a left turn onto southbound 99 from Live Oak. So, as you can see, the patterns here. And the department's plan to implement interim safety measure to reduce the identified collision patterns at this intersection. So what we're trying to do, we're gonna restrict State Route 99 to prevent left turn onto on and off State Route 99. So this will also prevent State Route 99 crossing movement. Basically, you can't cross Live Oak into Encinal and Encinal vice versa to Live Oak. So we are restricting through movement. We only allow right in and right out. By doing this, we are installing the Sure Curve system along the center line with rumble strips on either side, and we are restriping Live Oak Boulevard and Encinal with a painted splitter island to allow right in and right out only. So we'll, once the project is in, in place, we'll be continue to evaluate the collision pattern after it's complete. Like mentioned, it will collect and reach out to CHP for the available collisions, and we'll be monitoring that. So, next slide is the, here we show the intersection, and what you see here is the red delineated line in the center line. That is the Sure Curve system, the channelizers. I will be showing you what it's gonna look like on the next slide, but the limits of the rumble strips are parallel to the channelizers, and you see the yellow painted stripes. And there's gonna be additional modification to the signage and whatnot to say only right in and right out, right turn. So we are modifying some signage also. And with that, this next slide is what the Sure Curve is looking like. This here is a 40-inch-high system, and also it's a, the spacing is 48-inch spacing. These are grounded into the pavement, right? And Ed has all more detailed information. I'm just doing this here, the specification for this, that it was tested, and it was hit 50 times during the testing, the crash test, and it withstand all the hit, right? Up to 50 hits. So again, we will be monitoring how maintenance folks are aware of this, and we have extras for any damaged one, but we don't anticipate that because of the test result showing that it withstand a lot of hits. So this is the system that we are planning on installing. So this project is expected to go, like I mentioned, next Monday, on the 24th. It costs about $100,000. And the, like I mentioned, all the notices were sent out. And if you have any questions or concern, you can reach out to Public Information Officer, Gilbert Mohit Chan. His number is listed here, or email him. He'll reach out to one of us. So that's our proposed interim project. If you'd like to have any question, you can do it now or send out a, you know, question later to us. Thank you.
Thank you. Back to the council, any questions? Are you willing to take any questions from our audience?
Yes.
Okay. Invite anybody that might have a question for Caltrans to ask. Anything on technology?
No public comment.
All right. Thank you and your team for the presentation. We look forward to the increased level of safety that that project's going to provide, and thank you.
Thank you very much, and I apologize for the mishaps.
No worries.
Thank you.
All right. Item number three, COVID-19, Discussion and Action on Measures to Mitigate the Impacts of the COVID-19 Coronavirus Pandemics, will be presented by our city manager, Mr. Dave Vaughn.
Good evening, Mayor. Members of council, I have one quick update tonight. In June, staff will be bringing forward changes in the outdoor dining policy. This is in a process to work towards removing the emergency declaration, so we wanted to update you that we'll be starting to bring those forward. I know that's been a comment from the community, and we are working forward and look forward to doing that in June.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? Audience?
I just want to make sure this is a general comment for discussion on the COVID situation?
Now's as good a time as any. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I just want to say a couple things. Learn, love, live. Learn it, love it, live it. The Declaration of Independence, Constitution of the United States, and the Constitutional Oath. Don't be afraid. Now is the time to stand up courageously in the face of tyranny. In this life, there are few things worth fighting and dying for. Two of those, which without a doubt are worth fighting and dying for, are your family and your freedoms. America is a beacon of freedom. If we don't fight now and fight with righteousness in our heart for our universal freedoms, then our only future is tyranny. Now is the time to stand up, take the oath to protect and defend the Constitution of the United States of America, and let's take the fight to the enemies, both foreign and domestic. I served in the military. I served overseas. I've been to third-world countries. I've been to second-world countries. I live in presumably a first-world country. We're slowly losing that, if we haven't already lost it. They'll give us a timeframe. They'll tell us to meet their standards, and they'll all go back to normal, but I don't see that happening. Nobody sees that happening. Nobody in their right mind, that if the Almighty heard our prayers for wisdom, is hearing the wisdom that needs to be heard and the knowledge that needs to be known. And that is that corporate America is defining how we live our lives. I suggest that the city of Uba City makes it an example of itself and declares itself a constitutionally protected zone, meaning any business that operates within Uba City, any institution, any organization, has to abide by the Constitution of the United States, not infringe it, not abridge it with policies, regulations, mandates, et cetera. That is communism. That is Marxism. That is saying it's okay for them to take away the rights of their employees because they're a private business or a corporate entity, and we have no say of that. That's ridiculous. So let me just quickly, because I know I only have three minutes, but let me just, if I could suggest this real quick. Mayor, councilmembers, massive PR campaign to give notification to the public, corporations, businesses, agencies, organizations, of constitutional rights of the citizens, and repercussions if those rights are violated. Please, just maybe 30 seconds?
Yes.
City Attorney? Civil class action lawsuits versus all corporations, businesses, agencies, everything, anybody that violates employees' constitutional rights, which are American citizen rights. They don't leave when you go to your employer. And then on top of that, notify, the First Amendment and the Fourteenth Amendment are your targets to go after. A couple examples of those, the First Amendment, Harvest Rock versus Gavin Newsom, okay? You can apply the same standard of the case versus all these people that are subjecting tests, vaccines, masks, et cetera, and giving them repercussions if they don't go along with them. The Fourteenth Amendment, Brown versus Board of Education. This can go into the vaccinated, unvaccinated, masked, unmasked. They are literally taking us and segregating us. There are citizens that can't go to certain stores here. I have respiratory condition from burn pits in Iraq. I have trouble breathing. I'm not gonna breathe humid air that isn't even good oxygen. It's recycled, and it's disgusting, and it's filled with bacteria. And I'm being refused services or access to services because I have a medical condition, you know? And that's covered under the Americans with Disabilities Act. Civil class action lawsuit. Designate Uba City a constitutionally protected zone. Thank you, and that's it. God bless you all.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Burns.
My name's Thomas Burns, and I wanted to say thank you to that man for saying what he said, and I'm with you 100% on what you said. So I just have a point. I know this is not public comment. This is the COVID-19 comment section, okay? Part of the circus. So I'm curious why this is red every meeting. The governor has declared a state of emergency. So can you give us some clarification on that?
Through the mayor.
Thank you.
I hope that you can hear me wearing this thing. The reason why that is put on there is to help educate the public as to why there are certain constraints in our ability to meet in these offices and to be able to gather together as a group. There have been executive orders that have been issued by Gavin Newsom. They've been challenged by the court, and they've been upheld with regards to public meetings. These notices that are on your agenda provide for additional access opportunities for the public to be able to come to the meetings either in person or remotely, as we have here, and to be able to listen and participate. So it's an expanding of the opportunities for the public to be able to speak. Fortunately, Uba City is in a condition where we can have people come to our chambers, as we have here this evening, as well as participate both over the internet and listen to be able to provide comment and emails. So that language is put there to notify the public of the additional access opportunities. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the audience? Online?
No public comment.
All right. Public Communications. Thank you, Mr. Vaughn, by the way. I have another thing I have to read. Sorry about that. Appearance of Interested Citizens, you are welcome and encouraged to participate in this meeting. Due to COVID-19, residents may attend the Uba City Council meetings in person via web conference or submit written comments by email. Consistent with public health guidelines for social distancing, limited seating is available in the council chambers. If an attendee does not have a facial covering, one can be provided. Comments may be made either at the council chamber podium. Please participate via web conference or email if you are ill or have been exposed to COVID-19. Public comment will be taken on items listed on the agenda when they are called. Public comment on items not listed on the agenda will be considered at this time. Comments on controversial items may be limited, and large groups are encouraged to select representatives to express the opinions of the group. We do ask that you speak clearly and into the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and at this time, I'm inviting a public comment. If you want to speak, please go to the podium. Mr. Burns?
Okay. So this is what I had planned to speak tonight. First of all, I want to say that the governor and his executive orders, if they violate the Constitution of the United States of America or the state of California Constitution, they're null and void. And in my mind, they do. So he can pound sand as far as I can see. But I wanted to... But I wanted to read a couple of amendments from our Bill of Rights. And I think it's always good to refresh yourself on these. And in reality, everybody that swore an oath to the Constitution, that means all you council members, you should know these, okay? And you should know them well. So the first, I'm not going to read them all, but I'm going to read some that I really like, okay? The First Amendment. Okay, and this, these were put together to protect the people from government. I was wondering, I think we got a new mic, man. It seems like it's 10 foot tall, so, or I'm extremely short. Okay, so the First Amendment says, Congress shall make no law respecting an establishment of religion or prohibiting the free exercise thereof, and we have seen that violated across this nation, even with pastors being arrested. What a shame, okay? Or abridging the freedom of speech. That means we can say whatever we like, okay? Or of the press, we can write down whatever we want. Or the right of the people peaceably to assemble and to petition the government for a redress of grievances, okay? I like that one. The Fourth Amendment, which I think is violated daily in America today, okay? And even by the police. It says, the right of the people to be secure in their persons, that's your body, houses, papers, and effects against unreasonable searches and seizures shall not be violated, and no warrants shall issue but upon probable cause, supported by oath or affirmation, and particularly describing the place to be searched and the person or things to be seized. Okay, this is very critical. I'm going to ask for a couple more seconds, because they had what they called general warrants back in the day, where they just, the British went in on fishing expeditions into people's homes looking for anything that they could. What a shame. And they're doing that electronically today, too. Okay, now, one of my favorite amendments that people do not, most people don't even know about, it says this, it's the Ninth Amendment. The enumeration in the Constitution of certain rights shall not be construed to deny or disparage others retained by the people. In other words, the people have their rights listed or not listed, written down or not written down. And it is the job of everybody that took an oath, and even those that did not, that are civil servants, to protect and to interpose on behalf of the people's rights. And I want to say one more thing. It's been bugging me for a few years. When you guys all took an oath to the Constitution, it was a little bit of too much clowning around. It should have been a very more solemn deal. And I was here, and I watched it. It is a solemn deal. So that's my opinion. Bye.
Thank you, Mr. Burns. Any bells, anybody else in the audience?
Christopher Burdigan. Just a quick reference to the Constitutional Bill of Rights, the Declaration of Independence. You can go to nationalarchives.gov and get it all right there. It won't take you more than 30 minutes to read it all. I mean, it might take you a little longer to understand it and really go into it and check out some of the cases and stuff, but it's pretty self-evident. Now, you guys have already taken a note. I don't know how many people in this room have served in the military or in the police force or on something, but if you guys would like, anybody in this room, you're more than welcome to stand out right now, and I can administer the Constitutional Oath to you. And I have it right here. I'm a non-commissioned officer in the United States Army Infantry, so it's all legit. If anybody wants to stand up, no? Nobody wants to take the oath to defend the Constitution? I believe that is what is wrong with our nation today. Thank you.
Thank you, Christopher. Anybody else? Online?
No public comment.
Okay. Next item is the consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine and can be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time that the council votes on the motion unless members of the city council, the staff, or public request specific items to be discussed or removed from the consent calendar for individual action. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak on any of these items on the consent calendar? Anybody online?
No public comment.
Okay. Council, entertain a motion on the consent calendar.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilman Harris, the second, and by Councilwoman Espen Dola. All those in favor of approving the consent calendar signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the consent calendar is approved unanimously. Okay, this is the item that I moved forward, item number 17. This is the Bog Stewart Master Plan, Master Tax Exchange Agreement with Sutter County. This will be presented by our city manager, Mr. Dave Vaughn.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, good evening. I'm here tonight to bring forward the Bog Stewart Master Tax, Master Plan, Master Tax Exchange Agreement. As some background, the Bog Stewart Master Plan, BSMB, guides the orderly development of 741.5 acres located along the south edge of Yuba City outside of the existing sphere of influence. As you can tell, this is the, I didn't use this before, this area here, and it kind of goes there, there's River Bend Elementary. This is the land use aspect of it. Again, primarily residential, mixed commercial as well. Background, November 12, 2020, Sutter Local Agency Formation Commission, commonly known as LAFCO, approved an amendment to the city's sphere of influence to include the Bog Stewart Master Plan area. Newcombe Ranch has submitted an application to annex into the city. In order for the properties within the Bog Stewart Master Plan area to annex into the city, state law requires both jurisdictions, City of Yuba City and Sutter County, to approve a resolution authorizing an agreement for sharing revenues generated in the annexation area before LAFCO can determine an annexation application is complete. Agreements are typically referred to as master tax exchange agreements or MTEAs. Here's a structure of the agreement that we were able to coordinate and negotiate with our partners at Sutter County. This provides a property tax split, is the same notion that I provided at the last meeting, 6832, a sales tax split of 9010. Estimated revenues of buildout for Sutter County is approximately 3.6 million. Estimated revenues for City of Yuba City is around 5.1. Expenses, 2.7 for Sutter County, 4.5. Again, these are a buildout. Net revenues of buildout, 907 for Sutter County and 573 for City of Yuba City. As part of the direction I was provided at the last meeting was to work with the county and Steve Smith specifically to reach a re-opener language. We done, we have done that. The MTA now includes a clause requiring the parties to discuss and consider any change in state law that requires either party under the physical impact model upon which the agreement relies. Tonight, you have two opportunities in front of you. One of them is an alternative. Do not approve the MTA and either stop negotiations with the county's proposal, resulting in all out annex, in all annexation applications being stalled indefinitely, or direct staff to negotiate different terms. Or, what staff is recommending, adopt a resolution approving the Bog Stewart Master Plan, Master Tax Exchange Agreement with Sutter County. I'd like to recognize Chairman Dan Flores from Sutter County in the audience, as well as Chief Administrative Officer, Mr. Steve Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Vaughn. Myself and the vice mayor inherited negotiations that started, I believe, five years ago on this master tax exchange agreement. And before I turn this over to the council for comment, I would like to acknowledge Chairman Flores, County Administrative Officer Smith, for the efforts them and their staff and their colleagues have placed in getting to this agreement. This has been a very important agreement that sets the stage for some annexations in the south portion of the city. Not to be confused with the keyhole or any of that, these are willing participants, if you will, in a process to join the city. If you don't mind, I would ask Chairman Flores and Mr. Smith if they would like to have a few comments before we turn it over to the council. Thank you for being here, by the way.
Turn the mic on. Yeah. So, yes. Honorable Mayor and City Council, first, I'd like to extend our condolences to Dave Shaw for the loss of his father. Dave, I want you to know that our prayers and thoughts are with you at this time of your loss, and we wish you peace at this time. With that, though, I want to follow up on Mayor Boomgarden's comments. You know, and I just wanted to take this opportunity on behalf of the Board of Supervisors and county staff to comment on the overall process. I won't go into depth into the process. There were times when Mayor Boomgarden and I were speaking, and there was an ice cream truck in the background, and we even created new vocabulary words from our, from our conversations. But we had many conversations, and they lasted a long time. And I'll tell you, you know, this takes time, and a lot of times, these things usually do. I know that I've had about seven years of experience now in being a county supervisor, and when we get into these kinds of things, there's a lot of complexity. The great part is that when we can get together as adults and, and act like the partners that we actually are and work together to come to agreement, you know, we don't necessarily have to agree on every item, but we have to keep talking and work our way through all of it. And I think through this very strong partnership that I've seen, this is strongest partnership I've seen between the city and county in the seven years I've been involved. And I'm very proud of our accomplishments that we were able to talk through that. I would also like to commend the staff to their hard work through it. Dave got to come in at the end here, but came in for the clean sweep, and it worked out great, and we give him kudos for that. And working, he worked closely with Steve to get through a lot of the process. So getting through it, it was, it was pretty good. At the end of the day, like I said, these things take time, but, you know, looking at what, what happened with LAFCO, the approval was just a short time ago in reality, and then it's allowing us now to move on to the next steps of the process. So, you know, to me, this is just a great day for the city. This is a great day for the county, and most importantly, it's just a great day for the region's economic development to come. So I just want to say kudos to the city and the county working together, and I'm looking forward to working on future agreements as well. And I know that we will, and we're going to get a lot done here in the next couple of years. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. Mr. Smith.
After that, I feel like I should have gotten to go first. Now, honorable mayor, honorable vice mayor and council, I just wanted to say thank you. I would reiterate all of Chairman Flores's comments, but just want to thank you all and thank the staff. And Diana was a pleasure to work with for a long time, and now Dave is as well. And yeah, I think this is something great for the region. We all saw Yuba City number two hottest housing market in the, in the U.S., and we've got to get some more housing going. We know that's a problem, whether it's high-end, middle, or affordable housing. So just happy to be a part of it, and thanks for the invitation to be here tonight.
Thank you for being here. I think, again, not to belabor a lot of thank yous, but there are a few people before, again, before there are any questions, Diana Langley, Ben Moody, city staff, Dave Vaughn, all played a part in this. I think that fundamentally, the public expects governmental agencies to get along in the best interest of the public, and this is an example. Though it took a little while, we got to where we needed to get. We, I think we covered each other's interests in regards to funding the services that we both provide, and, you know, the benefit of what I consider to be a successful negotiation is that's taken care of. It does set forth the path for annexation in the south part of the city. You saw the Bog Stewart Master Plan in regards to its housings, commercial development, parks, schools, et cetera. It is undoubtedly the next phase of how Yuba City will orderly grow and will pay for the services that we as a city and the county provide. With that, I probably should pass off to the vice mayor. He was a portion of these negotiations as well. So I would allow you, sir, to make a few comments, and then we'll put Mr. Vaughn on the, on the hot seat for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, Chairman Flores, thank you. Yeah, as you, we discussed coming in, it's been a rough couple of weeks, so I do thank you for what you said earlier. I'm just happy we're at the finish line. The biggest disappointment that I have with the Bog Stewart area is, like you said, it took five years, and wished it would have been sooner because growth has happened, but we're there, and this is the next chapter that we need, and it's going to be a success, not only to the city, but the county in bringing it in. We're projected Sacramento region, including Yuba City, to be the number one housing market. So we've got to get housing going, and I've said it multiple times, this is not just about affordable housing. This isn't about, it's about all housing. We need all levels of income here. We need housing. When you've got four houses in inventory in the city, we've got a problem. So it needs to grow. So I want to thank the county and our city team for the countless, countless hours that has been put forth in this effort. The mayor, we've had, we never got near an ice cream truck, though, I will say that. Ours was usually Starbucks or on the phone. But, but a lot of effort has gone through. The biggest thing, as the mayor said, is to cover all the expenses so that we know we can take care of our residents, because that is job one, and then we can bring the economic growth of this city, because this city is poised for even brighter days ahead, and I'm just glad to be a part of it. So everyone the mayor's already mentioned, thank you, and let's get this thing going and MTA done, and let's go.
May have mentioned or failed to mention one individual, and if I don't mention, I'm sure I'm going to hear about it, and not Supervisor Conant. He was part of the, of the committee as well. So to Supervisor Conant, please extend our, our thanks as well. Okay, council, any questions for Mr. Vaughn and/or our city or county partners?
Through the mayor, I don't necessarily have a question. I think we asked the questions at the last meeting, but Chairman Flores and CAO Steve Smith, so I'm so glad to see you in person, first of all, because we've been seeing each other virtually in all these other forums, but I thank you for staying with us and really finding the interest of both sides, meaning the county and the city. We are really strong partners, and within strong partnerships, there are moments of tensions, which are good if you know how to work through them. But if you let those things stifle you and not allow the growth to come, then it is a problem. But I am so thankful for our mayor and vice mayor working with both of you and your team and Supervisor Conant as well. But I also recognize that with, without Diana Langley and Ben and Dave and the team behind the team, our consultants, to help really come to some sort of agreement that we're all about to take on, the growth of the city is going to happen. This, this is part of the next part of Yuba City. I know there's another part of somewhere, something else happening, but it is not in the city of Yuba City, and I am very, very much thankful for, for the opportunity to be here and to, to support this. And gentlemen, thanks for the work on that and for keeping us on track. And gentlemen, thanks for the work on that and for keeping us on track the entire time. So thank you so much.
You are welcome.
Sir, if I may, once again, also no questions, just a comment and broken record of thank yous all the way around, much appreciated the time and effort you've, gentlemen, put into the process. It's going to be nothing but a good thing. I think once we get through this and see full build-out, you know, early on and quite some time ago, we had established the priority of this council is to establish and reaffirm and build relationships externally. And I think this is a very conspicuous and very good example of what it takes to do that and come through the other side of a complicated and rather arduous process where we went mutually beneficial. And I'm proud of that, and I'm proud to be a part of that. And once again, thank you, everybody, for everything. We're looking forward to seeing some progress down there.
Thank you. Through the mayor, no questions, not to be a broken record, but thank you for all the individuals involved in the last five years with all your hard work, and let's just move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. This is the time when someone makes a motion.
Mr. Mayor, it is a public comment, period?
I wanted to get this done, Dave.
And I'm going to be, I'm going to be city attorney to it this time.
He was ready.
He was, we had already talked about it.
I don't have this as a public.
It's in the public comments section, or public comments section.
Anyway, do we have any comments from the public?
Thomas Burns. So I'd like to give my public comment. The, when it comes to this program, it's all well and good. Yeah, I'm happy to have housing, but I'm against the redistribution of wealth, okay? And the taking from this guy and giving it to this guy. I want to be on record for that. And then I also want to point out that you might not realize it, okay? There's a song by Pink Floyd. I'm sure some of you guys from the 70s know who that group is, okay? And the song is called "Us and Them," and it says in there, "Haven't you heard? It's a battle with words." Okay? So I wanted to point that out. Now, I hear this word, and it always sparks my interest, and I hear it all the time in the city governments and the county governments, and that is our region or this region, okay? So regionalism is not American government. You should do a deep dive into that form of government. It is communist-type government. Do a little exercise on that. And we have what we call SECOG, okay? This is a form of regionalism. This is the tools that are being implemented to take the power from the people at the city level and at the county level and give it to a regional level. And it is anti-American, and it needs to be on record. So that's my comments on it.
Thank you, Mr. Burns. Anybody else? Yes.
Hi, my name's Courtney Allen. I run a small Airbnb out of my house, and I'm somebody who is very aware of our lack in housing. I get a lot of people who stay with me, and they're trying to relocate to Yuba City, and they stay with me for three or six months. They're unable to find housing, and they actually usually end up going back to where they came from, which is so sad and disappointing. And so I just really want to thank you guys for taking the initiative to solve this issue. And I just want to thank you guys and the county guys just for your thoughtfulness in that and providing for something that we really need desperately. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Christopher Burick. So this is really awesome, and, you know, one of the reasons I moved here, coming back from the military, I love California, and then, but I really dislike the cities. So I came here, because you guys are like a nice little farming community, which I grew up as, as a kid, you know? Very conservative, almost knows everybody within the, you know, area and helps each other out. I believe that that is what is drawing individuals to Yuba City, is our conservative values, our Christian values, our charity, our not really, you know, going along with all the different tyrannies, it's coming down from different forms of government. And we kind of, you guys have been really good on, you know, not interjecting that crap into our lives, but corporations. Corporations are doing that to us, and those are within our city limits. And they are violating our constitutional rights. They are violating their employees' constitutional rights. If we want housing and we want people to keep coming, we're going to need the ka-ching, ka-ching, ka-ching. And that's going to come civil lawsuits, suing Walmart, PetSmart, Staples, all these different big corporations that are in here trying to tell us how to live our lives. And I'm telling you now, city attorney, I know you didn't get there because you're, you know, a dumpty dumpty on the fence, you know? You got some knowledge and wisdom and, you know, schooling. I mean, the Constitution of the United States, the First and the Fourteenth Amendment alone can really, civil lawsuits, let the employees, let the people know, put it out in the Appeal Democrat, put it out on the Facebooks, put it out on Twitters, put it out on wherever you guys have your medias, that there are civil lawsuits. And if you have, if your rights have been infringed, contact us, and we will be raking in the dough from all these foreign nations that have been subjecting our citizens to tyranny. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other people in the audience wish to speak on this? Okay, how about online?
No public comment.
Okay. Now then, I think I have fulfilled my obligation on the public comment, so. I think so.
Okay. Through the mayor.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt a resolution approving the Bog Stewart Master Plan, Master Tax Exchange Agreement with Sutter County as presented this evening.
I second that.
All right, I have a motion by the Vice Mayor, Mr. Dave Shaw, and a second by Councilwoman Espendola. We'll take roll call vote on this one, please. I can do that.
Vice Mayor Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Espendola?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Kirchner?
Aye.
Mayor Boomgarden?
Aye. All right. Thank you, guys. All right. Now get it done on the 25th, okay?
All right, item 10, since we went out of sequence, is the Feather River Parkway Phase One repairs. This is about awarding a construction contract. This will be presented by our Public Works Director, Diana Langley.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. You have me for the next three items. So it's interesting to be in 2021 and be talking about damage that occurred in 2017, but such is the way with FEMA-funded projects. So in 2017, with the Orville incident, we had significant damage to the Feather River Parkway. And here's a couple of pictures that show the damage that occurred, mainly due to erosion, erosion of not only the embankments along the river, but also the roadways, and then erosion under some of the amenities, such as the picnic tables. Here is a map that shows Feather River Parkway, and the areas in purple are the areas designated for repair. For some background, in 2008, the city received 1.4 million to fund Phase One of the Feather River Parkway project, which was completed in 2013. As mentioned, the Phase One improvements were damaged during the 2017 spillway incident. The city applied for public assistance through FEMA and was able to obtain up to $789,567.26. Council wore a design contract in November 2019 and approved plans and specifications in August of 2020. Project was advertised for bids in April. Bids were opened on April 29th, and we received five bids. You can see that R&amp;R Horn Contractors is the apparent low bidder at $550,550. R&amp;R Horn is the current contractor for Feather River Parkway Phase Two. Construction management and inspection will be administered through Public Works. However, we will have some assistance through MHM for construction testing services and then the Solis Group for labor compliance services. Fiscal impact, a construction contract of $550,550. We're requesting 10% in construction contingency and 10% in construction management for a total of $660,660. FEMA, they contribute 75%. CAL-ES contributes 18.75%. And the city contribution will be 6.25%. Design and bidding costs were approximately $76,000, which leaves approximately $714,000 available for construction. And so, as noted, the construction cost is $660,660. We're requesting a supplemental appropriation of $640,000 to the project account as this, we fund this project upfront and then receive reimbursement from FEMA and CAL-ES. And so the recommendation is that council adopt a resolution awarding the project to R&amp;R Horn Contractors, and I'm not going to read the rest of it, but I'm happy to answer any questions. I just stunned you all into silence, didn't I?
I'm still stunned on the Bog Stewart Master Tax Agreement, sorry. Thank you for your presentation. Questions from the council?
Through the mayor.
Yes.
Ms. Langley, just two questions. If the contract is awarded to R&amp;R, approximate start date and approximate completion date?
My recollection, let me see if it's in the staff report real quick. They would be starting within the next, you know, couple of months, once we get the contract executed and the bonds and insurance, and then I would expect completion prior to the end of this calendar year.
Thank you.
Through the mayor, did you say, Diana, that they're currently doing, this construction company is doing some work for us now?
Phase Two.
Phase Two. So we already have a historical view of their work and?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Through the mayor.
Yes, sir.
You mentioned the completion date would be at the end of this fiscal year?
Calendar.
Calendar. So since it is on that side of the levee, what happens if we have another high-water event between now and then?
So once we get into the fall, through our permitting through the state, we basically, on a regular basis, have to obtain permission to stay within the floodplain. If we were to get a high-water event, the contractor has to move out their equipment out of the floodplain, and then we would just suspend the contract until such time as they can get back in there and complete the improvements. If we had additional damage, they would finish the work that was included as part of this scope of work, and the additional damage would have to be addressed separately.
Okay. Do we have any comments from the public on this item? Yes, sir.
I want to pose a question, actually. If, I've been down there swimming, you know, several times. I like to go down there and swim at the river. But what I was curious is, on the, what they're doing there, have they took into account the, maybe some trash bins or, you know? Because when I go down there, the trash cans that are there are overrun, they're spilling on the ground, it's a filthy mess, you know? So like, maybe some trash receptacles for, you know, trash enclosures, what we call them, and for dumpster or something, because it's out of control, ugly down there at times.
So that would not be contemplated as part of this contract, because it's repair work related to the 2017 incident? I do know that Brad McIntyre, the Community Services Director, is on teams, and he might be able to address, Parks is responsible for the maintenance, and we are still in the midst of construction of Phase Two, but he may be able to address installation of additional trash cans and things like that. I do know that a lot of people do take their trash down there, and it's an easy place to dump. And so, you know, it's something that staff tries to stay on top of in terms of keeping it clear. And I don't know if Mr. McIntyre has anything to add.
Only thing I would add to that, thank you, Ms. Langley, is that once we are completed with Phase Two, the construction that's down there right now, we will be allocating a full-time employee for that park. And at that time, we anticipate being able to increase trash receptacles or even bringing in a bin that we can, a larger bin that we can move in and out quickly on the, during the summer.
Thank you. I have one more question, a personal note. Ashley, where can I get one of those concrete picnic tables? I want one so the homeless don't cart it off.
Actually, Brad's crew could give you that information.
Okay. Anybody else in the audience? Online?
No public comment.
Okay. Counsel?
I move, oh, I'm sorry. I move to adopt the resolution. My contacts are not working very well, awarding construct. I said, I moved to adopt the recommendations listed on the agenda.
We have a motion to approve by Councilwoman Espendola, a second by Councilman Harris. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. Item 10, Feather River Parkway Phase One repairs passes unanimously. And we're moving to item number 11, wastewater treatment facility effluent discharge outfall diffuser project, final design authorization.
So I first want to thank Kevin Bradford, who I know is watching virtually. He took a very complex topic and strained it down into a comprehensive staff report, so I appreciate his work on this. So the topic of discussion is the outfall diffuser, and there, we currently have two options to dispose of treated effluent. One is we have an existing diffuser that you can barely see here, and then we also have our effluent disposal ponds, in which we have a pipe that goes underneath the river so we can discharge to these ponds. In 2011, there was significant water that went through the Feather River and actually changed the channel adjacent to the existing diffuser to where the existing diffuser is now out of the water for a large portion of the year. And per our permit requirements, we require a certain amount of water to flow over the diffuser in order to be able to discharge from the diffuser. So since about 2011, we've been greatly impacted by our ability to discharge from that diffuser. In addition, with the ponds being the only real viable option, they do have limited capacity, and then they also require routine monitoring and maintenance, and they're also vulnerable to high-water events. So in July of 2018, council ordered a contract to CH2M Hill Engineers, which is now Jacobs, to look at a new outfall diffuser. Their scope of work included pre-design, right-of-way acquisition, environmental permitting, final design, bidding services, and services during construction. Jacobs completed a pre-design report for 30% design, and the pre-design cost estimate for the new outfall diffuser was approximately $25 million. Because of the, it's just a 30% design, they added on a 50% contingency, which is, since you have a really high-level estimate for the improvements, you add in a large contingency, because there are so many unknowns, particularly when you're talking about in-river work for this new outfall diffuser. And so the current estimate is up to $35 million. So at that point in time, we said, let's take a step back. $35 million is a huge price tag. Let's evaluate whether or not we should be putting that money towards advanced treatment at the wastewater treatment facility. And so we, through council's authorization, asked Jacobs to prepare an advanced treatment study. So with that, they looked at three alternatives. One was baseline, which was to continue operation of the wastewater treatment One was baseline, which was to continue operation of the wastewater treatment facility as currently configured with a new outfall diffuser pipe. Alternative one was to continue with the high purity oxygen treatment, which is what we currently have, with an add-on treatment process for nitrogen removal to allow a new sidebank effluent discharge closer to the wastewater treatment facility. So you would have this sidebank effluent discharge, so that would be adjacent to the wastewater treatment facility and not have this downstream outfall diffuser. Alternative two was to completely abandon the high purity oxygen treatment and construct a new biological nitrogen removal process to allow new sidebank effluent discharge closer to the wastewater treatment facility. And looking at that, the baseline total cost estimate, $142 million. Alternative one was a range of $186 to $240 million. And alternative two was in the range of $240 million. In addition, the analysis included all master plan upgrades to 2040, evaluating SunSuite organic loading and fluctuations, which would be equalization and separate conveyance of SunSuite's waste stream, and then treated effluent ammonia limits, which would be internal return flow ammonia removal. The baseline alternative is recommended, which, to remind you, the baseline alternative is to move forward with the new outfall diffuser. It's substantially less expensive for both a capital and operations maintenance perspective, and it does have limited effectiveness at addressing future regulatory requirements. In the future, the state could come in and say, we're not going to allow you to continue with your current level of treatment. We want you to move to advanced treatment, which, you know, the cost estimates for that were significant. But at this point in time, they haven't moved in that direction, and so therefore, staff is recommending to move forward with the outfall diffuser. So the fiscal impact to be able to move forward with the design, so we're requesting to restore the final design budget and to accommodate additional scope for permitting surge control effluent pipe station modifications and cost escalation due to delays. So we're requesting that $901,857 be added to the contract. There's $1.56 million available in the contract account at this time. So the total fiscal impact is, for the revised contract, is about $3.85 million. The original contract was $2.8 million. We had an amendment one for about $163,000, which was additional work required for the 30% design. And then amendments two and three address the advanced treatment study for $340,000. And so, the true additional services related to completing this design is about $562,000. Alternatives is to direct staff to proceed with an advanced treatment alternative despite the higher costs, direct staff to further evaluate potential advanced treatment alternatives, or postpone the final design of a new relocated outfall despite the operational risks of using the effluent ponds. I don't recommend any of these alternatives. With the third alternative to postpone the final design, the new outfall diffuser is something that's been included in our waste discharge permit, and the state has the expectation that we are moving forward with that project. And so, we need to, and also, as mentioned previously, the ponds have limited capacity and are more intensive in terms of monitoring and maintenance. So with that, staff is recommending that council adopt a resolution to award amendment number four to the professional services agreement with CH2M Hill Engineers. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions from the council? Seeing none. Comments from the public?
I want to state and maybe get a clarification. In my business right now, the costs are going up so rapidly that it's out of control. It's amazing. I'm talking 20%, 15% on materials every month, and materials being allocated, and we don't, we're not able to get them. And so, I was curious if this is going to be an open-ended contract for those reasons right there? And how if, have they secured all, I mean, all the material needed for the contract? Or is there going to be a huge contingency? Because I'm just curious how that's going to fall out. That's basically it.
So that brings up a good point. The schedule for this project is most likely we would not start construction at the very earliest until the summer of 2023. This does require significant in-river work in the Feather River. And so, this is just the design contract. We would still need to put together the plans and specifications, which is part of the scope of work, bid the project, and then bring it back to council for award of the project. So there's going to be several more opportunities for council to consider this project. One would be approval plans and specs, two would be actually award of the project. And it's expected that it could take a couple of summers, you know, a couple of construction cycles to get this completed. I will note that construction costs have increased just exponentially within the last few months. It's extremely difficult to get materials. That's also part of the reason why you see such a huge contingency on the 30% design of this project. I would say that by the time that we bid this project in 2023, we would hope by that point in time, the construction market has stabilized to some extent, and that materials are again readily available. With that said, this is a completely different type of project than the city's ever done before. Yes, it's a long, extensive pipeline down to south along Garden Highway, but the in-river work is a significant portion of the project. So here's the wastewater treatment plant. It's basically a new pipe that comes all the way down along Garden Highway over to the Feather River and then extends into the Feather River. And this new pipe in the river would actually have ports that would allow the treated effluent to be discharged into the river. So huge, complex project, huge price, but we are very aware of what the construction market looks like, and that is also something that we would be tracking.
Anybody else from the public? Online?
No public comment.
All right. Turn this back to the council.
Through the mayor.
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution to award amendment number four to the professional services agreement with CH2M Hill Engineers Incorporated to initiate final design activities for the wastewater treatment facility effluent discharge outfall diffuser project, including new scope of work, tasks identified from the pre-designed activities, and authorize the city manager to execute the amendment following approval as to form to the city attorney with the finding that is in best interest of the city.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Kirchner, a second by Vice Mayor Shaw. All those? What?
Oh, I'm sorry. I was speaking under my.
Did you have something?
No.
Okay. No worries. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion passes unanimously. Item 12, formation of a community facilities district, CFD number 2021-1, to fund municipal services and provide for future annexation by unanimous written consent of the electors. This will be presented also by Ms. Langley.
I know how much council loves that when we annex properties into the 2017 CFD, that we have to do a very complex, convoluted process with multiple public hearings. As much as you love that, we're bringing forward a new community facilities district for you to consider. So for background, city typically, conditions of approval require new development to pay for its share of increased costs of operations and maintenance for police, fire, parks, drainage, and ongoing street maintenance costs. And one option to do that is the Melrose Community Facilities District, which was formed, would be formed under the Melrose Community Facilities Act of 1982. So on September 5th, 2017, council adopted Resolution 17-065, authorizing the formation of CFD 2017-1. And as you are painfully aware, we've recently had several annexations into that CFD, and it is a very complex process. And so, staff is recommending that the city create a new CFD to clarify the procedural requirements for joining the CFD, so that the future property owners can join easily by unanimous written consent. So the Melrose Act governs the formation of CFDs. It requires that prior to forming a district, the city council adopt policies related to the types of items it will finance and whether it will be used bonded indebtedness. So staff has prepared those policies, and they're included as part of the resolution. Staff also recommends that council adopt a resolution of intention to form CFD 2021-1 to authorize levy of a special tax therein and to authorize the annexation of future territories that desire to annex by unanimous written approval. The proposed boundary of CFD 2021-1 will encompass the proposed Dunn Ranch Estates. So you have Royal Ranchero to the west, Monroe to the north, and then Highway 20 to the south. And it includes Unit 1 of the subdivision. Future annexation areas include numerous undeveloped residential parcels within the city sphere of influence. So attached to the staff report were, I think, three maps that identified properties that staff felt could develop as residential properties. We did that with the intent to try to facilitate the process for them to annex into the CFD in the future in a very simple manner. So to finalize the formation of CFD 2021-1, staff will return to council on July 6, 2021, to hold a public hearing, call the election for Dunn Ranch Estates, Unit 1, open the ballots, declare the result, and adopt an ordinance. And then with that, future residential projects will then be able to annex into the CFD at a single council meeting by submitting a unanimous written consent. So the hearing report for CFD 2021-1 follows the same methodology used in the formation of CFD 2017-1. The levy amount is the same, so $467.10 per single-family residential unit, $340.70 for multifamily. And the levy contains an escalation factor equal to the percentage of escalation of the city's combined police and fire department budgets, up to a maximum of 4%. So specific to the Dunn Ranch Estates, Unit 1, there are 56 residential parcels. And so, as that project develops on an annual basis, the city would collect $26,157.60 through the CFD. So alternatives include to not authorize the formation of the CFD and direct staff on other acceptable means, or require the staff to develop an alternative method of rate and apportionment for CFD 2021-1. So with that, recommendation is to adopt a resolution adopting the policies related to community facilities districts for services, and then adopt a resolution declaring the intention to establish CFD 2021-1. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions from the council? Seeing none. Public comment? Nope. All right. Online?
No public comment.
Okay. To the council.
All right. I move to adopt the recommendations as listed A and B on the agenda, and just like to add to that this is a very smart move on the process, so I like the changes of the policies and procedures to this.
I'll second that.
All right. I have a motion by Councilwoman Esmondola, second by Councilman Kirchner. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Not hearing any. Item 12 passes unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Langley. And off she goes. All right. Item number.
She headed off to senior night for her daughter, so trying to catch halftime.
Awesome. Item 13, amended and restated resolution to confirm participation in the statewide community infrastructure program, otherwise known as skip. This will be presented by George Barlow. Mr. Barlow?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. Thank you for allowing me to be here tonight. Statewide Community Infrastructure Program, skip. It's always hard coming after Diana because she's so professional up here, doesn't skip a beat, and here I am, being nervous after she comes up. It happened last time, it happens tonight, so here I am. Statewide Community Infrastructure Program, the statewide community infrastructure program, skip, is a tax-exempt financing program offered through the California Statewide Communities Development Authority, that is CSCDA, which can be used by developers to finance public infrastructure facilities and impact fees. Skip provides two programs. The skip pooled revenue bond program, which issues bonds three times a year. Once a city has joined, developers may submit applications online. The skip program, currently, the city joined skip through resolution back in 2010. And here today, we're for the second portion of this program that skip actually started last year, and therefore, the reason for the amended, restated resolution. A standalone skip CFD program, which issues bonds for larger projects as the project schedule dictates. Skip will craft a project-specific JPFA skip resolution for board approval for which participating local agencies. I dove a little bit deeper in the meaning of these, just to give you a brief background. Prior to last year, skip was a benefit assessment program to fund public improvements for a special benefit for a specific development or geographical area in accordance with the Improvement Act of 1913. Skip could find, skip could fund impact fees and infrastructure that provide special benefit to the property owners in the development, but not improvements deemed have been a general benefit, such as schools, parks, transportation. The bold program, which is the bond opportunities for land developers, is a CFD program authorized by Melrose Act of 1982, providing financing for those fees and improvements deemed the general benefit fees. Since last year, in fact, the spring of last year, skip also started providing its CFD program authorized by Melrose Act of 1982, and covers both special benefit and general benefit pooled financing for developers. Skip has 532 members, right around 118 local agency members. Since 2003, skip has issued over $816 million in bonds for 298 projects across California, of which over $266 million have been CFD bond financing. In 2020, skip created its CFD local obligation program, which allows for the use of CFDs in the skip pooled revenue bond program mentioned above. The first CFD local obligation bonds were issued last spring from skip. Program benefits. Skip provides local agencies a means of offering competitive financing to all developers as a turnkey solution, which minimizes local agency staff time. I mentioned this a couple of times, local agency staff time. Skip has been designed to minimize local agency staff involvement by using an experienced team of finance professionals to administer the program, thereby freeing valuable local agency resources for other functions. This highly versatile program has been modeled to the needs of each local agency participant of skip. As most local agencies require developers to pay impact fees prior to obtaining a permit, skip can be used to directly prepay these fees, or alternatively, to reimburse the developer after fee payment. The program can be used to enable developers to pay for or be reimbursed for all eligible impact fees, or for a single impact fee. Moreover, the program may alleviate the need for a fee deferral program by providing the local agency with necessary funds and eliminating the risk of non-payment by the And what that means is local agencies save time and effort. The program can finance projects which range in size from $500,000 to $25 million or higher. Developers gain access to capital, and project economics are improved because it improves cash flow for the developers. Developers use skip for a variety of reasons, can be part of the capital mix of debt, equity, public financing, provides. public financing, provides off-balance-sheet, land-secure, non-recourse debt, can provide competitive advantages with respect to residential marketing. Key events. The city does not issue bonds or levy assessments. The schedule of proceedings is described below. Skip resolution passed by local agency, therefore the amended and restated resolution that staff is bringing before council tonight. Standalone districts are established on a project-by-project basis. District formation and bond issuance proceedings conducted by CSCDA. Hearing and election conducted by CSCDA. And CSCDA authorizes the sale of bonds. Transaction is closed and funds are delivered to the city. Eligible facilities and impact fees, transportation improvements, water system improvements, drainage system improvements, wastewater system improvements, recycled water system improvements, park, parkway, and open space improvements, schools and educational facilities, development impact fees, and other incidentals, and bond issuance. Recommendation. Conduct a public hearing, and after consideration, adopt the proposed amended and restated resolution, making certain findings and authorizing certain matters necessary to participate in the statewide community infrastructure program, skip. Fiscal impact. No direct fiscal impact would result from adopting the proposed resolution. And with that, if you have any questions.
All right. Thanks, Mr. Barlow. I appreciate the extra information there outlining what skip's all about and the advantages it can bring to the city. At this time—well, let's do this first. Any questions for the council before I open the public hearing? Seeing none. The public hearing—oops. Got to hit myself. Public hearing on the city's participation in the statewide community infrastructure program, skip, is now open. If there are any members of the public who would like to address the council on this issue, please provide your statement via public comment, state your name and address for the record. Do you have any comments from the public on this item?
Thomas Burns, 1885 Green Gate Street. So I thought, first of all, Mr. Barlow, that was an excellent presentation, and good graphics, too. But for me, I think that's a move to help get the housing that you're talking about. But I have a question that might—that'll help me and maybe some people in the public because I have never really dove into it. But can you explain what is the bond program and how it works? Because I've never really quite understood that, you know? Give a quick synopsis on how that works. Thank you.
Shannon, would you like to take that one for us?
Thank you. I certainly can unless Mr. Barlow wants to jump in. But, Mr. Burns, typically how the bond proceeds work is the—I'm assuming you know what bonds are. So skip will have the bonds. They will issue bonds determining in a certain amount. Those bonds will have an interest rates. They make those monies available for developers to pay their impact fees or to put in infrastructure as a portion of those bonds, and then the development repays the bonds over a period of time. So what it does is it allows an opportunity for housing, for example, to come in without those costs front-loaded into the cost of the house, which means that the house will be have a lower purchase price to allow people to get in. But the owners of the house will then pay over a period of time so they don't have to front-load those costs, and it can be easier to get a loan for them. I think I got that right, Mr. Barlow.
Anything to add, Mr. Barlow?
Yes, and I'll just add in regards of the process, Mr. Burns. The IRS code defines the term pooled financing bond, which that's what skip is about. As any bond issued as part of an issue more than $5 million of the proceeds, of which are reasonably expected at the time of issuance of the bonds, to be used are intentionally used directly or indirectly to make a financed loan to two or more, so actually more, developers can be involved with this pooled bonding.
All right. Any other questions, comments from the public? Online.
No public comments.
All right. Hearing no further comment on this issue, I'm closing the public hearing, bringing the matter back to the council.
Through the mayor.
Yes, sir.
I make a motion that we adopt the proposed amended and reinstated resolution, making certain findings and authorizing certain matters necessary to participate in the community infrastructure program known as skip.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion made by Councilman Kirchner, second by the Vice Mayor, Dave Shaw. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. Item 13 passes unanimously. Mr. Barlow, number 14, city sponsorship request. Now you get to follow yourself, so it should be easier.
Now I feel more comfortable. I would also like to say thank you to Ben Moody and our city manager, Dave Vaughn, for allowing me to work cross-departmental. So I work in the city manager's office, but was able to work in development services under Ben Moody with this project. It's a project that I believe, again, as Mr. Burns alluded to, that will help our developers and help, again, gain benefits with development in Yuba City. So I want to thank our city manager and Ben Moody for his leadership in this. Mr. Mayor, council members, we have before you now city sponsorship programs and requests. The purpose: Review and discuss community sponsorship requests by the Yuba Sutter Chamber of Commerce and a request by the Downtown Business Association. Staff received sponsorship requests from the Yuba Sutter Chamber of Commerce. It's an in-kind sponsorship of $1,100 for the senior center facility use fee during the chamber's membership campaign. The event was held May 3 through May 5 earlier this month. The $1,100 fee is the city's standard rate based on hours and equipment used for the three-day period. Staff also received a sponsorship request from the Downtown Business Association of $10,500 for the downtown summer stroll on June 19. That'll be next month. With an in-kind sponsorship of $1,900 for the street closure services. On April 6, 2021, council approved the DBA request to use the previously issued funds for the 2020 Christmas stroll of $10,500 towards the Spring Festival event on April 17, 2021, with an in-kind sponsorship of $466.44 for street closure services. Fiscal impact is $1,100 in-kind sponsorship for the Yuba Sutter Chamber of Commerce, use of the senior center facility. $10,500 monetary sponsorship for the DBA's summer stroll, and $1,900 in-kind for the summer stroll street closure services. FY 2021 budgeted funds available is $12,000. Recommendations. Consider sponsorship requests for the Yuba Sutter Chamber of $1,100 in-kind for use of the senior center. Consider a sponsorship request for the Downtown Business Association of $10,500 for the summer stroll event. Consider a sponsorship request from the Downtown Business Association of $1,900 in-kind for the summer stroll street closure services. Any questions?
Back to the council for any questions?
Through the mayor.
Yes.
No questions, but really excited about the possibility that we're getting back with the summer stroll, June 19, potentially. And love the idea of getting back to business. Thank you, DBA, for all the things that you do.
Any other questions? I do have one. Do you have a question?
I have a comment, but if you want, go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, real quick. Fireworks money. Is that a separate item, or is this in competition for that?
Separate item.
We do have it in a separate spot, then.
I'll double-check, but I talked to Spencer, and it was in a separate spot.
Awesome. Okay. All clear.
Don't worry, Sandy. I got you. Yes, sir.
All right. Through Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to make the comment that these three requests are all about community partnerships. And just want to note that while the $1,100 in-kind for the chamber seems so de minimis, that was a huge boost to the Chamber of Commerce because they had an incredible membership drive coming out of COVID to where they were really hurting. So absolutely think it's an investment in our community. And all those faces nodding in the rows there know how I feel about the DBA, and I'm ready for some party happening on Pluma Street here next month. So just wanted to point out that it was a good investment.
Through the mayor. I agree that DBA to do the summer stroll is an important support that we need to continue. I think with the chamber, thank you for having me go on your team, wearing those shirts, those money shirts felt a little weird, but hey, I'm just like, okay, let's roll with it. So I think that in consideration that the city has—we get asked for a lot, you know? And so my view always is how do we do this equitably across the board, you know? Because we have such a variety of different local businesses, nonprofits. The chamber's a nonprofit. DBA is actually a nonprofit as well, right? So I just want to, you know, make sure that when we get another nonprofit and saying, "Hey, can you in-kind this after the fact?", I would like the in-kind to be reviewed before the events occur. So there is a process in that. But with the DBA, I mean, we've had the conversations, you know, the Christmas stroll, those things are closed down, all—so I love going to those events. They're just one of the best, and it brings in tons of people, right, from the other area. So I think that, you know, the chamber fully supported. I mean, I signed up. I'm a member now. So I just think that, you know, we just gave and, you know, re-gave you authority for our city manager for no payments for at least six months, and there's a new hire of a director, which is awesome and amazing, $125,000 raising of money. You know, I'm not trying to pick pennies and dollars and nickels. I just like for us to be equitable on the process of how people come and ask us, ask us before, not after the fact. Because I mean, like now, it's like, why are you asking? It's already done, in my humble opinion. But you're asking before, which is, I think, the appropriate way to do it. And I appreciate that, and I fully support it.
Through the mayor. Just to recognize the DBA, they have embraced the city's process and actually have their requests in for the '21-'22 year already for budget review and consideration. So much credit to the DBA and their team. And Councilmember Espendola, you're 100% correct on the chamber request. It was sort of an afterthought for them, and so I will take 100% responsibility for that and make sure it happens in the future ahead of time.
Well, I appreciate that. I mean, I was there at the event. The event was great. Let's just have it done ahead of time. That's cool.
Through the mayor. The two council members just reminded me the chamber's council or membership drive is so successful, I actually became a member. And so I just wanted to disclose to everyone that I am a member, but will not affect my decisions or my legal advice that I'm giving you tonight. It's being transparent.
I'm not going to say who signed that individual up. But when I made the call, it didn't happen.
Yeah. That was a good decision, city attorney. Yeah.
Any other questions or comments?
Through the mayor. One final one. Councilwoman, you bring up a good point, and you're looking at the organizations. When we look as a council, we do get a lot of requests for money. But the things that we need to make sure of, we're doing and setting aside is the things that have wide community benefit that's not for pocketing money and fundraising for themselves, such as the Downtown Business Association strolls, because I can go down there, walk, listen to music, never spend a dime, and it's free, and that's an investment in our community. And I know that there's a lot of other organizations that come up, and they're trying to raise money for their nonprofit and looking for things. And just my opinion, as one of the five, I think in my mind, I look at them as two different requests, because this is an investment in the community. What I said about the chamber coming out of COVID, shot in the arm to, you know, get the chamber, you know, because it had lost a lot of business and stuff, so it's down the line, should have been forethought, but it was an afterthought. It's $1,100. But this is different than the Sutter County Museum, the Arts Council, the Rotary Club, which I'm a member, the Kiwanis, which the mayor is a member. It's two different things. And I think that that's—personally, that's the lens I look at when I look at funding things. That was my only comment.
I appreciate that, Vice Mayor. Thank you.
All right. Back to the council for action. Oh, timeout. Public comment? I was going to invite you up anyway, but— Or Crystal.
Let me get my big binder. There's going to be questions tonight, but the staff directed me to make sure that I was prepared, so I appreciate that. Thank you very much. So good evening, Mayor Boom Gardner—Gardener.
Garden.
Just kidding, just kidding.
I'm appreciating that you didn't call me bum gardener.
He is for hire. He's a good gardener.
Vice Mayor Shaw, Councilman and Councilwoman, and our city manager Vaughn, thank you for the opportunity to allow us to be in front of you today. And to my board members, who—this is the most attentive they've ever been. We only have an hour meeting, and usually they're already checking out, so thank you to my board for holding in. I'm sure you guys learned a lot and it was very informative. But yeah, thank you for you guys' support. We have 79 small business owners down there, under the umbrella of the Downtown Business Association, and we have 17 associated members. We have a couple of associated members, and then here on my board, you'll also see the small business owners. And then we have property owners as well. We have one board member who's trying to make a monopoly of Pluma Street, but we're glad we've got that—the new blood down there, so we're excited. But just thank you for that. And the DBA is a nonprofit, but I just wanted to make sure that we are in Pluma Street, it is a street. But there are 79 businesses that we support down there, and hopefully, this is how you guys have seen through the last couple of years, a great partnership. It typically brings before pre-COVID about 18,000 to 20,000 people per event. So it is a ton of work that this board works hard for. But again, it is for the community, and we live in—our businesses are down in beautiful Yuba City on Pluma Street. So we just appreciate all you guys' support.
Well, as you've heard up here, we appreciate the DBA, we appreciate the partnership. It's been a long one. There's always a few things we can tweak, and I know we're working on a lot of that, but I appreciate the board being here tonight, sitting through the whole meeting. You guys and the DBA are very important to the city of Yuba City. You bring forward lots of events that are quality-of-life issues, so we do very much appreciate that. Any questions for Ms. Droner? Okay. Hearing none. Okay. Any other comment from the public? Anything online?
No public comments.
All right. Back to— Back to the council for action, please.
Through the mayor. Move to approve 14 A, B, and C.
Second. I had a second, excuse me, I had a motion by the Vice Mayor and a tie for second between Councilperson Kirchner and Councilman Harris. I'll give this one to Kirchner. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none? There you go. Thanks for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Look forward to seeing you guys down there.
Come down every, every meeting you're welcome.
All right. Item number 15 is the Richland Village Affordable Housing Regional Housing Authority Funding Request. This is going to be presented by Mr. Moody, our Development Services.
All right. So good evening, Mayor, members of the council. So I'm going to follow up here tonight. And so I'm going to make everybody look good with my presentation. So we'll power through here. And I'm batting for under 8:30 here. So we're going to go through my next three. So Richmond Village project, there's been, this item's been before you regarding the development plan, where it first went to the planning commission in December, and then it was in January, and then to the city council in May regarding this funding request. And so it specifically has to do with the regional housing authorities Affordable Housing Project that deals with 176 unit affordable housing development. It's a proposed project. They're looking for funding. With that, the way, and Gus, I want to make sure, I recognize that Gus Becerra and his team is online via Teams and here to answer any questions as we work through this. And so their project, it's a substantial project. It's a large, multifamily proposed development, one of the largest in Yuba City that we've seen in quite some time. With this, with the affordable funding project, it's really getting it entitled and then looking through state and federal money in order to finance it. Because as we work through the slides, affordable housing is only affordable for the end user. And so it's Richland Village, 147 Bernard Drive, the southeast corner of the Richland area, which is up against the airport. Its estimated cost is $70 million and probably climbing with the recent changes in prices. Here's an elevation, looking at the buildings. There's eight buildings. They're multi-unit buildings, multi-stories. Three of the buildings closest to the airport are adjusted in height as they get away from the airport to reflect the requirements for the airport height requirements. They're proposing this to be built in one phase. So a quick breakdown of the project estimate, these numbers are from, Gus and his team can definitely add to them. These were a snapshot in time back in early spring regarding the cost. But you're looking at a unit cost of almost $375,000 per unit and climbing with some of the costs in California. And on comparison, when we were looking at this, the 2019 California average was $480,000 a unit to build affordable housing in California. And so with this, it's a nice, large project, but there's definitely a lot of effort that was put into it to, you know, not, it's basic. This is really a basic project. There's some design elements regarding, you know, some different colored stucco and some aesthetics regarding trying to keep it nice over the long term or the duration of the life of the building. And a lot of consideration regarding green building with solar panels and the windows and how it's laid out. But it's really a basic building. Fiscal analysis. So what's going on is that each year, HCD, the California Housing Department, issues, releases, it has a call for projects for this grant funding. And the funding, I'm going to get the term wrong here, it's in the staff report, but there's an affordable housing grant that they're looking to leverage funds for to obtain this grant. And so through that, there's a need on the Richland Housing Authority, Regional Housing Authority side, to obtain as much funding as they can locally, so then they could argue in the grant application for a leverage of a match, to try to bring in, to show the participation, the local participation. And the higher they're able to show that participation, the higher their score goes within the grant. And Gus could definitely add to that. But there's not a magic number that's been provided by the state as far as how much of a match needs to be to play. It really, it comes down to the competition and the funds available. And so we received a request for funds to help with this match in the amount of $2.2 million. And out of that, the funds that we're talking about utilizing are the city's low mod housing asset fund, which is approximately $1.1 million in there right now. That's old RDA money that was used to buy the homes on the north side of Bridge Street that have been sold. And then when the properties were demoed and then purchased by the road funds, they were reimbursed, those funds were reimbursed and put into the low mod asset fund account. We have a homes to family account, which basically, based on keeping those rentals and the rents received on those homes, in some various homes across the city, it goes into this homes to family account, which generates the rents and turns it over for maintenance. And so, and then we have the recently relatively new SB2, the PLHA, so the Permanent Local Housing Act, that provides the city approximately $300,000 a year for funds for housing and homelessness activities. And so those are the balances that are currently in those funds, with SB2 being a five-year projection that's currently anticipated to be ongoing. So here's the breakout. And I want to make sure I'm clear that the Richland Housing, the Regional Housing Authority recognizes this is a large request. And with that, they understand, you know, that they humbly will take what is available. They know that there might be other priorities or needs for the city. But with that, they looked at the accounts, looked at what's available to start the initial request. And so they're definitely, have communicated that they know, they understand it's a large request and they will utilize what is available to put towards their grant. So with that, how they have the breakout right now is a million bucks out of low mod that would leave about $93,000 left in that account. Homes to family, it would leave about $100,000 in that account, which has been relayed that that's adequate to keep the program going and take care of maintenance as it builds back up through rents. And then with the SB2, the million dollar request, that would put us in the upper 50% of the range. Right now, that would be in our threshold of allocating without coming back and reallocating those funds. And so I've put some funding alternatives up here just for consideration. The way the request is written tonight, it's really at council's discretion regarding where they're at with priorities and what there's a potential need towards hold money back based on future projects or at the council's desire. And so A, the alternative A is really the full request as proposed. And then with option B, what that does is that leaves the low mod money substantially intact, about $850,000, $840,000 left in that account. And then with option C, that only utilizes the SB2 money. So there's a few options, but really it's at the discretion of the council tonight. And so to add to this item tonight is that recently, options, recommendation C tonight, there's language in there about entering into an agreement. And so what this agreement discusses, it's an agreement, as part of the grant application, they have to provide so much pedestrian and bicycle improvements. And in order to, is part of the grant, I think almost $750,000 in the community. And so with that, they're required to have an agreement with the city that if they get the money, the city agrees to let them do the work. And so it's really a win-win for the city with an agreement. If they do get the grant, we're just basically saying, yes, we're okay with you building curbs and sidewalks on Samuel Drive and doing, this picture's really a strain. But what this is, is a Park Avenue area, and it's out of our, your recently approved safe routes to school plan. And what they would do is they would pick a couple of projects out of there, up to $150,000 in that area. And then there's some proposed work along Samuel Drive on the east side for curbs and sidewalk, and then along McKinnon back into the project. And so this agreement is basically saying, yes, state, if the state gives the entity the money, the city will allow them to build those pedestrian improvements. And so there's some alternatives tonight, proposed alternative funding amounts required. There's also with the potential dedication of funds, the timing of the funds. And so there's options for requiring the funds provided the city are first applied towards, well, the duration of the commitment is an option. And then there could be some stipulations about where the funds need to be applied towards. And so with that, I'd be happy to entertain any questions and then also turn it over to Gus's team for questions and further input. And with one note, that on recommendation C, there's been a change in the entity as far as what's compared to the staff report that was written. And so the entity that we're going to be entering, asking to enter in the agreement with is the Sutter Community Affordable Housing. And so we'll update those agreements. So at the end of it, with the recommendation, we'll request that that entity name be updated. So for now, I'll turn it over. I'm to Gus's team, if he has anything to add, or the mayor.
Any, before we turn it over to Mr. Becerra, do you want to hear from Mr. Becerra? Okay. Mr. Becerra, good to see you this evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Yeah, I think Mr. Moody summed it up very well. Thank you for clarifying the name of the nonprofit entity then. You know, earlier, Vice Mayor Shaw, you made a comment, and we couldn't agree with you more about how much all types of housing are needed in our city. And so before you today, we have a, you know, what we believe is a great project for the community to target our local workforce. It is a large project. And as Mr. Moody mentioned, it is a large request that we have before you. And we understand that the council may have some other priorities or some other projects in the pipeline. But, you know, we would be happy with any commitment the council would make. As Mr. Moody mentioned, the secret sauce to competing for these other state and federal funds is the local leverage. And I think all of you are aware of that and how your generous commitment to the New Haven Court project got us over the hump and we were able to secure all the financing and build that project. And so it's the same for these other types of financing sources that Mr. Moody went over and are available in your staff report. So we would accept any financial commitment at the pleasure of a council. You know, it's definitely not a all or nothing scenario. So happy to answer any questions that are more project specific or anything else for that matter. And with me tonight is Ms. Rebecca Flores, also with the Housing Authority, and our developer partners from Sage Housing Group, Mr. Luke Watkins and Ms. Shoshana Zots. And we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Becerra. Welcome to Ms. Flores and to the rest of your team, council. Any questions for the Regional Housing Authority team?
Through the mayor. I actually have a question for Mr. Moody, just for clarification for us and the public. By entering the agreement and allowing them to develop, it still has to meet all the city guidelines and specifications. It will not be deviated from what our current specs are for sidewalks, streets, and things, correct?
Yes, absolutely. And we put language in there specifically. And then also that if the grant is not approved, then it would be automatically terminated. And so it's pretty solid, but really, it's kind of like issuing an encroachment permit for somebody to do work in the city.
Okay.
All right. No questions from the council at this time. Do we have anybody from the public that would like to talk about this? Seeing none here. How about online?
No public comment.
Okay. We'll return it back to the council.
Through the mayor.
Yes, sir.
We've seen this project several times. And I've seen it multiple times, Mr. Becerra, as the Chair of Transit, because I know that this is all tied to the Green Means Go from Secog and the buses. There's a lot of parts that goes into the competitiveness of this project. And giving it a lot of thought, I think, just speculation on my part of the five council members, there's probably not a one of us up here that is against the project because we know we need affordable housing. The question gets to how much is that commitment going to be? And when I started looking over this, and from the first time it was presented, I go back to the New Haven project. And we look at what it was designed for, and we look at where the finances came from, and we look at the people involved or the municipalities involved. And we started out our meeting tonight with a great partnership with the county. And then we transitioned through to DBA and the chamber and things. But let's go back to that relationship with the county for a few minutes. The affordable housing, the lion's share of money that comes in to our community to care for homeless, mental health, all of that, falls upon the county as they get the lion's share of the funds for this. We have limited resources that we have. And so this really needs to be a partnership that I strongly feel that we need to work with the county in coming up with a way to make this work. And Mr. Becerra or Mr. Moody, if either one of you guys could correct me if I misspeak here, I want to make sure I got my numbers correct. The county's commitment thus far has been roughly $480,000. They're going to waive impact fees, I believe it is. So just round it to a half a million dollars. Is that correct?
That's correct, Vice Mayor.
Okay. So here we are in another scenario to where county is doing exactly what they did. And it's grateful. I'm not trying to say it's wrong. It's just I want to look at where we're at. It's the same type of situation we were at with New Haven. They waived fees. We turned around and gave money and resources. So given that, my proposal to this, and I can make it in a form of a motion, we can discuss it, it doesn't matter, but I would think that we should strongly match what the county's doing. And let's just round it. They put in a half a million, so we commit a half a million. But then we turn around, I'm willing to go up to $750,000, but I want the county to come up to 750,000. Because I don't feel that we should put in a million, 2 million, 2.2 million in, and the county put in 480,000, so call it 500K. I think this should be a real community-based project, and it can get you there. Because as you said, you'll take anything you can get, but we've got to look at where all the resources are coming in. And while we've had some special funds coming in because of the COVID and the CARES, American Rescue, this all gets back to ongoing funding that comes in, and the county gets the lion's share. So I would really like to see them step up and match. So I would easily say, commit a half million, but I'm willing to go to, you know, $750,000 if the county will matches there. And take, you know, their fee waivers as part of that match. So that's where I would start. So, Mr. Mayor, if you want to have discussion or if you want a motion, that's my thoughts.
How about some thoughts from the council? I mean, Gus, is there another ask on the table from the county?
There is not. Councilmember Harris, so when we discussed with the county, you know, what kind of funding they had available, they don't have any at the moment. So they committed all of the funding that they had that was earmarked for housing to New Haven, in addition to the impact fees. So the county committed one and a half million dollars of Mental Health Services Act funding to the New Haven project. And they also committed $1.1 million of their No Place Like Home Formula Grant. And then they committed, it was $100,000 of impact fee waivers, and then $200,000 of CDVG. So all in, the county was, you know, up So all in, the county was, you know, upwards of almost $3 million. But that money that they had, with the exception of the impact fees, of course, and the CDVG, was specifically earmarked only for permanent supportive housing targeting the homeless, which is what New Haven is. Richland Village, on the other hand, is targeting families, our local workforce. But regardless, in our discussions with the county, at this point, it doesn't look like they have any, any specific earmarked housing, housing funds, I guess. So when city staff calculated what the total impact fees were at the county level, they were able to, to commit to a full deferral. But, so to answer your question, there was no additional ask because of our initial discussions, it was made pretty clear that there was no other funding that they have at the moment.
I would, I would comment then, our recent action to cut our development impact fees is actually probably helping to subsidize that in addition to whatever the funds are that we're committing. You are an infill project and therefore subject to lowered fees.
Yes, absolutely. That, that will definitely help tremendously.
Other comments or questions? The council?
Through the mayor?
Yes, sir.
I would, I would support the Vice Mayor in, in a motion to, to match what the county committed to.
Okay. Hold that for just a second. Mr. Becerra, I do have one question and it's item, action B and R's is the funding commitment time duration of two years. Is that critical to the success of the application? Again, pushing, you know, committing this, this funding, especially in a, in a hyper-inflated building market right now, you know, concerns me. I, I'm fully supportive of the project, definitely think it's a great addition to the community. But, you know, and I certainly wouldn't be opposed to revisiting in a year, depending upon what's going on. But I think you're probably even more aware than I right now of the increased construction costs. So, I mean, if we said one year and then bring it back to us, is that going to be a deal killer? Is that going to impact the, the potential success of the, the application?
I, I, I think, Mr. Mayor, a year might be pretty tight for us and, and here's why. So the, as Mr. Moody indicated, applying for the, this first round of financing, the affordable housing and sustainable communities, those applications are due June 7th, I believe. And that, and that's only one layer that we need. And so if that's awarded, we'll know, the state is saying October 28th is the potential award date. If, if we are successful, then, then we have to apply for another layer of financing, which as you know, is low income housing tax credits. That application would be due, obviously the 2022 calendar's not open yet or available yet, but it probably would be about this time next year, give or take a few weeks of when that application is due. And so if we're running up against the city's commitment expiring, then, you know, then that creates a gap for that tax credit application that we would be applying for roughly in about 12 months. And so, but our request, if the council would consider is to make whatever commitment the council agrees to in line with maybe our planning entitlements. And I, I believe our planning entitlements were approved by this council in, I think it's December, and Mr. Moody may correct me on that, but I think it was December. And we were wondering if you could make at least your financial commitment in line with that same expiration, which I believe we learned from your staff that it's, that it's a two-year validity, I guess, of our entitlements, putting them into December of '22, I believe. So.
So if I.
I think, long answer to your question, but yeah, I think one year would be pretty, it'd be pretty tight. The other piece of your question regarding construction costs, you are correct. Lumber costs are, are crushing, you know, our budgets at the moment. I think there was a member of the public who, who might be in the construction industry was mentioning the same thing. Materials are just coming in, you know, consistently, consistently being, arising. And so what we did is, is in our budget, you know, in, in consultation with our general contractor, is, is we have a premium for the lumber built into now, just because of the unknown. You know, lumber costs are, are rising almost weekly. So we do have a premium built into there because we just don't know.
So if I heard you correctly, then I think you would be okay with us saying that in reference to the duration, if we had that coincide with your planning entitlements, that, that would be, that would be okay? I mean, that makes, that makes sense to me.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we, we would definitely be okay with that. I think that gives us enough time to apply for AHSC in this round. And then, and then if we're successful, apply for tax credits in the spring. And hopefully we're successful with AHSC here in June. But it would also give us time to reapply next year, next, next June, if for some reason we weren't successful this year. So that would be appreciated.
Okay. Other questions or comments?
Yeah, through the mayor. I'm glad that you asked that question because that prompted a couple of other questions, Gus. With the, with the application that is due next month, the likelihood of if we were to say, you know, a match, a match of 700, 700 each side contributed to that, how competitive is that going to be? Because when we supported your, the application for New Haven, it was a smaller project and I think it was a much larger matching of cash or, or waves or lose. So I, I just, I'm trying to understand the competitiveness of this. That's my first question. And the second question is, if you, if, if Richland Housing makes it through the June, then would you then be coming back in Octo-, you know, for the October for the tax credits and, and maybe asking for more matching funds to make us even more competitive? And, and what is the plan for that if that's the case? And how are you including other municipalities? Because 176 is an amazing opportunity for us, but the community that's going to live there is not going to be all from Uba City.
So to your first question is, is we don't know what other competitions out there. We don't know what other developers are, are applying, you know, for, for these same funds. So we, we just don't know. That, that's, you know, what makes it competitive is, is, is the unknown of who's, who else is applying and what kind of local leverage they're bringing to the table. As far as the timeline, October is when they would announce the awards of this application that's due in June. That's not when we would apply for tax credits. So we would find out late October, early November if we get the AHSC funds.
Correct.
If we are successful, then we would be applying about this time, about May of '22 for the tax credits. I think you were asking, would we ask for additional funds from the city to apply for the tax credits if we were awarded AHSC? And, and the answer is no. I mean, if, if we're awarded AHSC funds, then, then, then all the package leverage that comes in, the cities, the counties, the AHSC counts as leverage towards the tax credits. And so we would go in with that whole package for tax credits in May. As far as other municipalities, the, the market area for, for a project of this size in this city is pretty much reduced to this market area. So we have to provide a market study in our applications. And because of the population of Uba City, believe it or not, they, they don't use an expanded market area because we are at the 60, 70,000 population. You know, they use, they use data from, from our, our wait lists actually a lot. And so our, our market area is pretty much Uba City. Now, fair housing laws preclude, preclude us from denying an application from anyone else, but we do establish local preferences on our local projects. So a project built in Live Oak, we can give a preference to somebody who lives in Live Oak. Project in Uba City, the same. But, you know, we would not go to an expanded market area. When we develop in small cities like, say, Williams, Calusa, you know, you do have expanded market areas sometimes because those cities are so small and, but not in this case. In this case, our, our main target is the city of Uba City.
Thank you for clarifying that. So I, I, Ben, on the, on the funding that you, that we have access to, would some of those funds then be replenished within the next fiscal year? Because some of it is from old money that we, you know, from the sales of homes and other things. Are we having, will we have another lot of money coming in 2022, 21, 22 that we don't, we don't, we haven't designated in this?
So the SB2 money is annual and we're utilizing a five-year projection. And so annually, we get 300,000 plus or minus in that, in that account. The others, no. And so there's, there's a set number of homes. There, there are some remaining homes. I believe it's nine homes. Correct me if I'm wrong. And, but when they sell, they will be allocated into the low mod home, low mod fund. But until those remaining homes sell, there's no additional resource to those accounts. But SB2 is annual.
Okay. So there would be an, an additional 300 at this point? That's what you're projecting based on the previous years?
The numbers in, in highlighted on the screen are the five-year estimate from last year. And so it wouldn't be until 2025 where we would then be above the, the ability to allocate more than the 1.7, if that makes sense.
Right. Okay. I, I mean, I, I think, Vice Mayor, I agree with you. The equitableness of, you know, the county and us, I'm hoping that, you know, if we could measure going up to maybe a million and we still keep the other million and a half or somewhere around there, 176 opportunities of home for workforce, as we hear so much of this, you know, a million dollars comparable to what I was earlier comparing the in-kind to the chamber, which was $1,000. You know, that seems like nothing. A million dollars is an investment, but if we were to be awarded, that's 176 potential homes. And that's, that's, that's a big investment.
Yeah. Through the mayor. Councilwoman, I, I absolutely agree. What I did not want us to get into is kind of where we were at with, with New Haven. It took, I believe, and correct me if I, if I misspeak, but I think it was a five or six-year process to get through. It was wanting to tie up funds or having funds tied up. And I know from the other briefings that I've received, Gus, you guys are trying to knock this thing out of the park to be real competitive. So it's, it's not just us, it's CACOG and others that's coming on and other stuff through transit. I would be comfortable with going up to one mil if the county would match us because I think they, and, and they've got excess funds. It doesn't specifically have to come from, you know, the, the low mod housing and stuff like that that they're getting. If they would match us, I would be comfortable because that still leaves us 1.2 available to, to address the other issues. If the county comes to us and says, hey, we need another better way somewhere else. We need to, you know, do something to, to get the homeless off the street and this money can be used for it. I don't want it tied up in a bidding process. So as, if we maintain the extra 1.2, that's, that's about my limit. I'm comfortable up to maybe a million. It's, it's a great project, Gus. I don't want you to take this away as this isn't a good project. This is a good project. But as we know, California affordable housing, pardon the French to hell with it, it is not affordable. $375,000 per unit when you can build a house for $375,000. We need to be in, but it needs to be equitable across. So my, I would, I would be comfortable going a million, but honestly, that's my cap.
My, I return, sir.
Yeah.
Thank you both for all that. Thank you for everything. The, we have 2.2, as far as I am aware. We don't have any plans for it and this is the only ask we have for the 2.2. Is that correct?
We don't have any current asks for the 2.2.
Okay. We just have a lot of potential asks, I'm sure. Okay.
But at this point.
Okay. No, I'm aware that there are people going to be coming to us. Habitat for Humanity has scheduled a meeting.
We meet with them coming up, yes.
Okay. So we don't, we don't know what their numbers are, what their.
They don't know what their ask.
Coming to say hi. Agreed.
I don't mean to be flippant, but.
Agreed. So we don't know what the numbers are, though. Okay.
We, we don't know the project. They've just asked to meet with the mayor and I.
Okay. That's good to know. For that reason, Gus, I, that's one reason why I'm not comfortable with just giving the whole monty for one project when we have that gap there, but the potential ask we just learned about at least one in the works. After reading everything, reviewing everything, of course, I, as stated, we all support the concept of this project and definitely hope that it comes to fruition for all the reasons stated. It's just, it's nothing but a good thing, provide housing, especially at that level for our community. 2.2, I came in here thinking 1.2. I've heard a couple of my colleagues here, you know, be okay with, with one. I would definitely be, I would prefer 1.2, but I would definitely be in line with the one. I do respectfully think that we should not make a contingent on the county's participation. They do what they do. What they can do, we can do what we can do. And it gives us an opportunity to show our support and not necessarily in an attempt for tat level, but i- if we're going to give 1 million versus the 500K, we're actually in, in many ways taking a leadership role in that position. And we, we've advocated for partnerships, we've advocated for affordable housing and my vote or my preference, I'd be good with the 1 million. But I would like it not to be contingent. We can do it on our own, right? My opinion.
Mayor, I would just like to say that I would support Councilman Harris on that without the contingency.
So my comments, again, not to just continue the, the overwhelming support that's here, my, my concern is, once again, as it has been in the past, is, you know, is this money going to be used for the benefit of Uba City residents? And I think you asked a fantastic question. And it doesn't sound to me like we can earmark it for those folks who are our constituents, who are spending their money here and living here and paying their taxes here. Am I correct in that, Mr. Becerra?
That, that's correct. Fair housing laws prevent us from making that specificity, but we can make a local preference. And we do establish local preferences with any of our projects. And, and, you know, we, whether we're in, in Truckee or Calusa or Williams, we establish a local preference. And, you know, out of all the jurisdictions that we work in, you know, Uba City is the largest. And there is definitely a, a need in the city of Uba City. And, and I, I think, I mean, just looking at the data on our wait lists, we could fill it with, with, with folks that are homeless in Uba City or, you know, living in, living in, in, in substandard conditions or two or three households. We get that a lot. We get a lot of applicants that are living in a household, two or three households or living under one home. And so just the data that we have is, just from Uba City applicants, it's, it's not enough. It's not even enough housing, so.
You, you hit on one, one piece there that, you know, again, which kind of circles back, which is the fact that there is a housing shortage in Northern California. And so here we are in this opportunity to participate in this great project. It just seems like it would be to our benefit to make sure that our local residents are the ones that were actually benefiting. That, that would be the concern I have in regards to if there was a way to establish some level of priority rather than, and I don't want to sound selfish, you know, I mean, we're all Californians, we're all Americans, but at the same time, we sit up here shepherding city money and therefore investing city money in city projects that benefit city residents should be a priority.
Absolutely.
So.
Absolutely.
The only, only other question I have then is in regards to.
The only other question I have then is in regards to future funding, because I think you also asked another question is, is there's, you know, we, we don't know what the federal or the state government's going to be doing to providing extra money for housing. Do you have any, I mean, maybe I'm putting you on the spot or, or Becky on the spot here, but are you aware of any of, of this stuff that's being mentioned that would be potentially available for, to supplement this project?
So, so it's already happened in the low-income housing tax credits. The, the feds did supplement that. They did what's called the fix that allows for more private equity to come into these deals. So, so that, that, that already happened. That, that's already been made into law. Becky, isn't the home program in, in their new NOFA? Didn't, didn't the feds add a substantial amount of home dollars into, into the upcoming NOFA that's coming out this summer?
Yes, I believe so. And I believe this age, a CNOFA is a much larger allocation than we've seen in prior years.
That's right. This is a round six of HSC, and I believe it's the largest, so.
That's correct.
Okay. I appreciate that update. That helps. Back to the council.
A point of clarification. The county has already committed to $480,000, $500,000.
That's correct.
They're deferring, they're deferring impact fees. They're not making unnecessary contribution. They're foregoing revenue that they would, they would normally receive from the development impact fees.
Correct.
Through the mayor.
It's probably going to prove by the board of supervisors.
If I can circle back where I started and Councilmember Harris, thank you. Your comment made me go back and think of, as we started this journey a year ago or so when COVID broke loose, control what you control and you deal with the rest. And you're right, we don't control the county. But Gus, please, by all means, ask them to kick in some more money. Is that direct enough, sir?
We need to engage in those conversations, Vice Mayor.
So.
Ride along.
So with that, and I do want to do a ride along. So with that, I would make a motion, if I can, Mr. Mayor. I move that we approve funding in the amount of 1 million on the successful project approval of the State Affordable Housing and Sustainable Communities Program for a proposed multipurpose 176-unit affordable housing complex and authorize the city manager to execute any associated documentation related to the commitment of the funding. Secondly, to set the funding commitment timeline or duration to coincide with your goals. Is that correct, Mr. Becerra? Your timeline, how do you call it?
Coincided with the approval that the council made for the development plan or planning entitlements, which was made up.
The planning entitlements to coincide with the planning entitlements. And then C, adopt the resolution to execute a cooperation agreement between the city and the, what was it, Sutter Housing, the one that was up there.
I need to interrupt you here.
Sure.
We're, we're recommending a million, but we haven't told them out of which funds you wanted to make it.
Oh, I can go back. Yes, thank you. Low mod. I would, I would, I would pull it out of the low mod because we have 1.09. It's in there. The other is for maintenance. The other is SB two. That'll have ongoing, so we've got those available for future projects. That's where I personally would pull it from, so.
Before we go too far down the line.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And so item C is the cooperative agreement with the agency. You said there, if that will work for a motion because it's quite long.
And I'll second.
Through the mayor. If I could get a clarification from both the first and the second. So that would be to establish a funding commitment time duration of two years to coincide with the validity of the initial development plan approval period? And any extensions of the funding duration would be null and void without reconsideration by the city council? Is that correct? Awesome. And second, is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you so much.
All right. Just want to make sure I had public comment. Did I?
I know. You're going to go.
It's my habit.
Go back to public.
I did it too.
Okay. I have a, a motion and a second on item number.
I lost track.
15.
15, thank you. I doodled over the top of that. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, a motion passes unanimously. There we go. Thank you, Mr. Becerra, Ms. Flores. Appreciate it and your team as well.
Thank you very much.
Have a good evening. Appreciate the support.
Make sure to get it awarded now.
All right, next item, item 16, which is a shopping carts ordinance update by Mr. Moody.
So as mentioned, the shopping cart ordinance introduction is before you tonight. And so this is a little bit of a longstanding project over the last year where we've had some discussion at council where there's been brought forward talking about where the 27th or 2017, 2018 ordinance that was new to the city, where that's at, and then some of the potential issues with that ordinance as we look to tweak it. And then we had a workshop with the, with a council representative, with the business representatives. And then so, so through that, we developed a, a tweak to the ordinance, is what I'd say. You know, I, I think it's a, and with us tonight, I want to make sure to let you know that we have code enforcement officers, Eric Ball, and then also Lincoln Eden online to help answer any of the questions with the city attorney. So, so a little timeline, December 2017, original ordinance adopted and went into effect January 2018, September 27th, September of 2020. So you have COVID going on and then, so you had about a good two years of, of, of implementation of the new ordinance. And then with COVID, you know, it was, it was an odd year, but the numbers were about the same as, as the 2019 year. And so in November of 2020, we had a workshop with local businesses to get their feedback as far as what the existing ordinance was, affected their businesses and what potential changes would help or hinder their businesses. Putting a lot on the table for them. And so before you tonight is a proposal to, to tweak it. And so Yuba City has approximately 35 retail businesses to provide rolling shopping carts. You know, here's some pictures around town, some of the issues. It's, it's a hot item of YC 311. You know, this is one of the most popular issues that comes in, unfortunately. And it's, they, they get taken off-site, they get abandoned, they get used for various things. And coming up with a mechanism that's not burdensome to city resources and to the community and then also to the businesses and trying to figure out a way to minimize this impact of pretty much blight and cost to the businesses and blight to the city. So the existing ordinances, and there's a table here, there's a lot of information in that. And really it has this breakdown of how it currently is with these thresholds. And so if you have less than nine, you don't have to do anything. You're exempt. You got 10 to 90, you need to enter into a, a plan that you basically establish who your point of contact is, who are we going to call when we receive a YC 311 ticket? And you need to respond to pick that up within 24 hours. And then once you go above 91, you're required to have a contract service to come get the, a contractor to come pick that, pick the cart up when notified. And so, and then if you, if you're on the, if, if you're not maintaining your carts, there was a option, there was a clause that it, it could be conditioned that you have to put a cart containment system in. A cart containment system, they vary. One of the popular systems is, is a wheel locking system. But there's also other systems where, I know I've talked to Ross recently and where they, they have poles and they keep them inside the store. And so the poles are at a certain height so they don't go outside. Or they have some sort of system that, that keeps them, you know, somehow they're controlled and locked up at night. So carts approximately $120 to $200 each. The wheel locking system, it's not cheap to put in. It's about 40, 40,000 bucks depending on the number of carts. And there's maintenance with the, with the wheel too. And so there's approximately five businesses in town that I'm aware of that have put those, those in. They've, they've been proactive with putting those mechanisms in just basically a cost of business. They, they, they think there's long-term efficiency. I know Winco, Food Max, I believe recently Home Depot, and there's a few others that have put them in. And really what we've heard from the businesses is that it's really, it's turning into just a, a business cost, you know, a capital cost and, and looking at the long-term payoff. And it, it was amazing, and some of the numbers on how quick the payoff came back for some of these large vendors based on just if you have a cart with $200 worth of groceries and the cart itself going out the door, that, that adds up pretty quick into the repayment. And so we're, we're seeing some of that voluntary shift. So here's a quick snapshot I showed you before showing that the ordinance was, was great at reducing the number of carts that were out and about for the duration. You know, because before they would go out, city staff would have to pick them up or be long-term, it'd be a longer time period before they would get picked up via the businesses or from the city. And so, so what this shows is, is the complaints, it's not necessarily a number of carts out there, but it's the, the complaints received because of the duration that the carts were out there plus the number. So what we're proposing tonight is basically to clearly outline the, the law regarding, the rules regarding if you fall the code. You know, so there's some clarification requirements in there as far as exactly what it is or not you need to do for both people not being able to take them off-site and then also for the business owner. We're, we're basically modifying the threshold. So we're getting rid of that 90 number. And so the feedback that we got is there's, there's, there's some businesses right in that middle that, that are right on that number about being required to have a contract service. And that requirement is burdensome. It's, it's, you know, instead of being able to proactively go out and pick it up themselves, they're, they're having to get a contract with a, you know, weekly, monthly cost. And so that gives them some flexibility to basically up to 150 now, go out and pick up the cart themselves. We're modifying the retrieval period to be 24 to 72 hours. And so that sounds kind of bad, but that's realistic. And so what we wanted to do is really make this code be realistic with what it's going on. We don't, you know, by the time we see the card, we notify the business, they get, one of their employees or they're able to get the resources to go out and pick it up. 24 hours was pretty tight, you know. And so in, in order to have it, we're, we don't want to fall, fall out of compliance. We're giving them a little bit more room, time to respond. And then the biggest, one of the biggest things is the requirement. Well, first is that we're, we're doing, right now, we're changing the code is that the, right now, new businesses under the code are required to put this, the cart containment system in. So if, if you have 10 or more and you open new business in the city, you would have to have the cart containment system. And so what we're proposing is that we're taking that away. So we're treating all businesses the same, new or old. And then we're establishing 150, the number for, the threshold for the carts when this cart containment system is now required. It's not susceptible. And so of that, there's about nine businesses that have over 150 carts. And of those, five have put them in. The remaining are your larger vendors such as Walmart, Sam's Club, Lowe's, Target. They're, they're large vendors. A lot of them have 400 carts plus. You know, Lincoln could probably add how many Walmart has. I'm, I'm not sure Target, but there, there are substantial numbers on the number of carts for those. And so, so with that, it would basically set that threshold that they need to come up with some sort of cart containment system to keep those from going out into the community. And so here's an updated table. Nine or fewer remain exempt, 10 for, the 90 goes away, 10 to 149. You have to still have the plan, tells who the point person is. You get 72 hours to come pick it up. You don't have to contract. And then also with the 150, we're making them, the, the proposal is to have them install the cart containment system. But, but with that, we're also taking off the requirement for the contract service. And so there might be some cost savings offset it where now that they're putting the cart containment system in, they don't have to double pay. So Winco, where they've got the cart containment system in, they, they don't have to, if it's working effectively, they don't have to also be mandated to contract the cart retrieval. So I, I want to make sure I call this out with the penalties. There, there's some, some changes. I want to note that there's a, there's a state requirement that there only could be a maximum fine of up to $50 for, for taking the cart off-site per day. And so with this introduction, we're going to, we're going to tweak the language a little bit with the recommendation so that we match the state law regarding that maximum for the, to match the state regarding the fee. But with this, we've also in the penalties updated the, as far as the terms about, with the intent to match the panhandling and nuisance. So it's consistent on how we handle the infraction, infraction, and then the misdemeanor if it continued. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. I know Lincoln and Eric could definitely provide boots-on-the-ground experience. And Lincoln's talked to the businesses multiple times and reached out to them for participation. Recently, we received comments from Ross that they may participate tonight. Basically, there were some concerns from Ross on last week regarding just how this affected them. I, I spoke to them regarding, you know, their numbers. Basically, their numbers are, they're less than 100. They already put the cart containment system into effect. They also managed Dede's. So the, the representative I was talking to, he was a regional manager. And so he would be in charge of the carts for when Dede's comes in, comes in. And so as we walk through that, really, it was mute to him because they're already doing what we're proposing to do or doing what we, what we're asking through this ordinance. And then recently, we received a comment from Mr. Cotter with New Earth talking about, you know, he was looking for, he's got it. So I'll, I'll defer to any questions by the council.
I guess I have one question before we get into the discussion. As a, a business operator, I've had the misfortune of having shopping carts show up on, on our premises. And what you're saying is, is, and I'll use an example. Let's just say it's a grocery outlet. Grocery outlets, carts full of stuff of the, the person that stole the cart. Now it's on my property, and this might be a better question for Chief Landon. You say, I got to go get the cart. What am I supposed to do with all the stuff? Am I violating anything there with, I mean, can I throw it in the dumpster? Can they throw it in the dumpster? Because in the past, I've had wonderful help from code enforcement and even, even law enforcement. But I, you know, this is people's property. And I want to make sure that if we're going to say, hey, man, you got to go get your cart, that they're not placing themselves in some sort of liability.
Well, I'm not sure that you would want us to answer a question about liability or accepting liability for the city by telling a private person to get rid of stuff. If it's a city employer responding, no, we wouldn't throw the stuff away. We have an obligation to maintain it. There's case law out already about contacting somebody. We can't just, even if we were to arrest them, we can't throw it away. We have to keep it because it has value to that individual person. So I would not.
So what do I do as a citizen?
So the best thing to do as a citizen is to contact YC 311. It comes into our system. Lincoln, you know, that next day or that day, we'll send it off to the, the manager that's been listed on the plan. And then they're responsible to pick it up within that timeline. And then, you know, Lincoln, you could probably add into it. And there's some thresholds regarding if it's abandoned, if it's considered garbage of no value, if we throw it away or how dirty it is. Lincoln, I don't know.
I'm not thinking my, my question's getting answered, though. I'm the, I'm the person that has the misfortune of the cart on my property.
YC 311.
But then it's in the city's hands. We've just taken it right out of the.
So we'll contact. So we contact the business owner, so if it's Target, and Target needs to come pick it up within that 72 hours.
But what do they do with the contents? The city's going to handle the contents now? Is that what we're saying?
If it's abandoned, it.
So what happens to, it's not abandoned, though.
Well, if the cart's there with garbage in the cart.
It's not garbage sometimes, trust me.
Well, I, and I, we could add to it for the attorney. In my understanding, if it's abandoned, there might not be any value to it or we can consider it garbage.
The city has no control over a private party throwing away trash in a shopping cart.
So here comes, here comes Mr. Cotter from New Earth to retrieve his cart from my property for say, as an instance. He, he has to go figure out a place to dump all this stuff. And he's not going to be penalized for getting rid of somebody's or subject to some. And he's not going to get penalized for getting rid of somebody's or subject to some, to getting rid of somebody's stuff.
I'm trying to speak very carefully here, Mayor. I know where you're going, but at the same time, I'm trying to be very careful how I frame this. We obviously can't advise members of the public to go out and dump other people's property or trash or anything else. Once we are involved in the process, and if we end up impounding a cart, we have certain duties to maintain what we have. So I'm not sure what exactly the city's process is when, you know, people call into the city and we call up Target and say, hey, get your cart and take it away, what Target does with it. I do know, however, if the PD were to go out and to pound the cart for whatever the reason, we would then need to store the materials for a certain period of days under case law. I hope that helps.
It doesn't. And I'm not trying to be difficult, I'm just trying to place myself in the position of the business owner who has the cart, and the person's not there at the moment, but, you know, they typically return, and it's full of stuff, and what has value to some has no value to others, I'm not going to make that judgment. That property owner is gonna initiate the city. The whole idea here was to get it out of the city's hands, and now all of a sudden, it's gonna get back in the city's hands. And the, the property owner's gonna say, hey, man, you gotta go pick up your cart, okay? And now the poor, the person that owns the cart's gonna go, okay, what am I supposed to do with all this stuff? Am I wheeling it back to my store? Am I throwing it in the back of a pickup? What am I doing? It, it just seems like there's a missing piece here, that's all.
Through the mayor, if, if I can, I, I think the missing piece is one of the lines that was in there that was blatantly overlooked and purposely left out when the prior councils over years ago wrote it. As one former council member said, Susie Homemakers taking the cart home, and they might return it, or they will return it, it's not stealing. And at the end of the day, if someone, and we've had this conversation, if someone takes a shopping cart off the property, it's theft, they're stealing a shopping cart. Now, some of these stores are full of stuff, they're running out and running off with all their stuff. The updated ordinance, we're having it in there that it is illegal, whatever level it is, to take shopping carts off the premise. So if it's off the premise, it's stolen anyway. And I, just my opinion, and I'm just thinking out loud here, but if somebody stole my property and it's a shopping cart and there's a bunch of crap in it, I'm entitled to get my shopping cart back. And nothing changes what we're currently doing, because currently, if there's a shopping cart, you call 311, they're notified, and they still go get it. Right now, they have 24 hours, there are certain cases that the city ends up with it. We're not changing any of that, that didn't change at all. But what we're trying to do is get people not to take them off the premises, not overburden the businesses, because that was the other misstep in the prior ordinance, because the Walmart that has 400-plus carts, they don't have to put in locks. But I find Walmart carts all over town, and from our workshop we held, they said, just tell us, because it's just a cost of doing business, you know? That was, they expect it, they see it in other cities. But then we were gonna punish, we'll use DDs coming in, it has more than 10 carts, but not 400, they have to go spend $40,000 and put in a, a wheel lock system. That's what it currently says. So it was trying to take the burden off the businesses, get the public to quit stealing carts, because that's what it is. But at the end of the day, if, and I've had it, if something shows up on my doorstep, the crap hits the trash can, you know, because I'm not gonna leave it on the doorstep of my business, and that's my right as a citizen, it's on my property. And that cart belongs to whoever the cart belonged to. So hopefully, that kind of brings some clarification, maybe it doesn't, but it's not, we're not changing any of the current process, the burden is still with the business. And Mr. Attorney, correct me if I'm wrong, if it's on my property, I've kind of have some rights, correct?
That's, that's correct. You do have certain rights when things are on your property, not, not absolute rights, but certain rights.
Right, I mean, it's, it's not a perfect world, I would never ask you to answer that fully, but we're trying to get people to still quit stealing shopping carts, get the big offenders, because all over town, you see Target, Walmart, Sam's Club, Lowe's, those are the big ones you see everywhere. I passed four carts from my office to here tonight, and it's six blocks. So we're just trying to keep them where they belong.
Hey, Mayor.
Hold on. Respectfully, I understand the intent of the ordinance, and believe me, I'm a person that wants to see something done to eliminate the theft of property from the business. As presented tonight, the first thing that's gonna happen is that the owner of the shopping cart is gonna be told within 24 to 72 hours, they've got to go get the cart. My question still is, okay, what are they supposed to do with the contents of the cart? John Associates is perfectly comfortable discarding it, that's fine. My concern is, there might be some folks that don't even want to touch that stuff, and now they're gonna impact 311. Mr. Ball, Mr. Eden, the police department are gonna be involved now, because they're going, hey, man, I'm not touching, those things get kind of gnarly, to be honest with you. So I just, I raised the question, I realize that there might be some legalities involved with it, but I just, I think there's, there's a piece there that, that's not, doesn't sit well with me, that's all. And that's based upon experience, I'm not just hypothetically, this happens, and God knows, Rob knows, I've had to call him before. Anyway, excuse me, go ahead, Mr. Smith.
I was not trying to, I was trying to understand what you were saying, Mayor, and I, and I, it is, it is quite complex in how to deal with the content of the cart. I think that what I do appreciate about the ordinance and the alignment of other ordinances and bringing everything up to date, that Ben and Eric and Lincoln have worked so hard to put all this together, I think it really makes sense to, to modify and update this ordinance, it, it's needed. And this other area of unknown with content is, is a, is a, is a difficult one. But I also recognize that there are carts with no content that maybe could be picked up quickly and removed and dealt with. And the numbers do not seem to be increasing, which is a good thing, the numbers seem to be decreasing. So, but maybe there are just more gnarly carts out there than there were before. I, I like the direction of this, there is room for improvement, I do agree with you, Mayor, on that. So I would be supportive of, of the, of this ordinance and the updates.
Any other questions before I go to public comment? All right, so I do have a public comment item from Mr. Kevin Cotter that I will read. It says, can you please include my comments during the shopping cart ordinance discussion this evening? Good evening, thank you all for your continued public service, exclamation point. I appreciate the conversation around this topic as it relates to improving the quality of life and safety in our community. For clarification, does the ordinance support or give teeth to law enforcement to impound carts that are found to be removed from the business premises, especially for repeat offenders? Other than that clarification, I support the updated shopping cart ordinance as it is written. And it's, keep up the good work, be well, Kevin Cotter, founding partner, New Earth Family of Businesses. Do you want me to repeat the question?
Yeah, I'll get, I'm ready for you, I don't know if it was for me or not.
Okay.
So, so this ordinance clarifies what, what is allowed and what the penalties are. It does not provide any more tools for impounding the cart. And so there, there's, there's some language improvements where the last ordinance was a little vague, and we spelled out what the, what the requirements are, what it means to take one off-site, what the terms are that have to be done, but there's no additional authority regarding impounding, impounding a cart, it would just follow under state law, or the city's ordinance depending on if, if there was a circumstance where we decide to issue a citation.
So let me give, back to the chief again, just as an example, because I think this is what Mr. Cotter is alluding to. So I'm driving back to my office yesterday on Stabler Lane, well, it's actually on Walton, but heading towards Stabler, and I see a gentleman heading southbound with one of those big flat carts from Sam's Club. Nothing on it, it's obviously not something that he should be doing. And my first inclination was, okay, I'm gonna call the non-emergency number at the PD and say that, you know, basically got a theft in progress here, at least what appears to be. Does the, does the ordinance give law enforcement the opportunity to stop that, that person who's obviously probably doesn't have, and maybe he does, approval to remove the cart?
Existing state law is already in place that doesn't allow that. The existing ordinance has that in place where it's not allowed, and this current ordinance has that in place. As, as far as implementing that, where the police respond, that turns into another situation where, how is it labeled? How is it identified? Is the site marked correctly? And then as far as it really something that the DA is gonna prosecute and handle, and that causes a problem. But the current law, the current state law and current municipal code say it's, it's against the rules.
So I guess the question is, is it's not gonna be your role to go out and start, you know, so, so-and-so's driving down this, or walking down the street with carts, you're not gonna pull them over and grab them. I think that's Mr. Cotter's.
Yeah, we don't have the resources to do that, obviously.
I wouldn't think so.
Or the, or the time, but if it is a situation that is a public safety issue, we'll respond. But a lot of this goes back to the homelessness issues, it's not a law enforcement problem. There are problems that are inherent with every shopping cart we go to, that's a person's life.
Stuff, right.
Now, for us to take and confiscate it, then we're violating a ton of different things, and that's where we have to be careful, that we're not taking the guy's driver's license and all the other things that have been thrown away in other jurisdictions that caused the case law to come into place, where we're throwing away a person's home and stuff. So that's why we're very cautious when we do things like that.
Now we'll have a wheel stop on it when he's pushing it.
Not, not if they're nine to 10, or whatever the other numbers are, right? Oh, maybe that big one, if it's Sam's Club, sure, gotcha. Sierra, did we have any other public comment?
There's no public comment, but I do believe we need to open a public hearing.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, I appreciate the prompt on the public hearing. The public hearing on the shopping cart ordinance update is now open. If there are any members of the public who would like to address the council on this issue, please provide your statement via public comment to state your name and address for the record. Any comments from the public, I already read one, any others? Nothing online?
Still no.
Okay. Hearing no further comment on this issue, I'm closing the public hearing and bringing the matter back to the council.
Through the mayor. If I may just make a couple more comments. First of all, thank you for your questions, because I will tell you, the ordinance is not perfect, as it was noted. We're threading a needle in a haystack with this darn thing, but the intent is to try to help clean up our city. And I know you, you appreciate that, as I do, and we're on the same page, it's, it's just how do we get there? But I will tell you, this thing is not completely perfect, and I think we're probably going to end up having to amend it many more times down the line. And from where this first started, as the chief noted, the intent was never to suddenly create cart police or anything like that, it was to try to help another tool in the toolbox in cleaning up our city. And I just, I appreciate you guys, Ben, the work that you have done over the past year on this, I greatly appreciate it, and Shannon and your team. I, I appreciate, it's been a massive undertaking, because we are threading a needle in a haystack, so I thank you. With that, do we need a motion, Mr. Mayor, or do we, because this is the first reading we do?
The action as stated in the agenda is to introduce amending Chapter 22 to Title 5 of the Yuba City Municipal Code regulating shopping carts and waive the first reading, so to me, I think, yep.
And I would make that motion.
And did Mr., or Mayor Protem Shaw, would you also like to make the clarifications as to the $50 charge amount, to keep the original language?
Yes, with the updated penalties that Mr. State.
So keep the original language for the remainder of anything passed to any person who violates, and get rid of the stack penalties that were in there.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you very much, we'll make that clarification.
A second.
Okay, a motion by Vice Mayor Shaw, a second by Councilwoman Espendola. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Yes, for a no. And the only reason I want to, I really want to acknowledge the work of staff and the vice mayor and anyone who, who understands this. Fundamentally, I have a big problem with penalizing a business or anybody else that has their material stolen from them, so just, that's my, that's my comment. Okay, the motion passes four to one. Item 18, rescind 2005 city growth policies, Mr. Moody. We're not getting you out of here by 8:30, sorry.
I was just signaling to code enforcement, thank you, Eric, thank you, Lincoln, for all the work and outreach to the businesses, Lincoln's been really instrumental in coordinating with the businesses, and I think that shows in the feedback that we've had, just that there's been a lot of contact with them to work through that.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, so growth policies, you know, I'm gonna, all right. So, okay, so try to make this short, because you've, many of you have heard this multiple times, it's, it's been before you and our development impact fee, growth policies workshop a couple of years back, and then recently here, a few months back, a couple of months back, we were before you to get direction on how to proceed forward with guidance, with recommendation to go to staff and bring it back. And so really, what we've done is, we've taken a close look at these growth policies, we've coordinated with the attorney, we've coordinated internally with the different departments, Public Works, with the school district, and, and looked at really what each of these mean and their validity. Do we need to update them? Do we need to modify them? Do we delete some of them? Do we keep any of them, or do we just get rid of them? And really, where we landed was that we just, the best option is that with the redundancy, with the reason that these were put in place, again, was that it was, there was, it was put in place during a time of rapid growth, it was when they had a newly adopted general plan, and there was an effort to put in this backstop to catch up, to implement these new general plan policies, and then give time to the city to do the analysis for their impact fees, do their analysis for their master plan infrastructure requirements. And so since that time, 16, 17 years have gone by, and we've done those studies, we've done those master plans, and, and things have changed, policies have changed, and legally, there's some that are questionable about implementing different requirements for other agencies, and then, and also terms of agreement that, that are subject to potential issues. And so really, when we looked at them as a team, we're coming back with a request to rescind them. And so before you is really just a, a request for a resolution to rescind these. I did work through each policy and work through that, it was in the staff report as far as the reasoning behind each one, and I'd be happy to go through that individually or at the end by question. And so in the staff report, we identified the reason and, and some of the backup information as to why we recommend the rescind, the deletion or all the policies in the resolution be rescinded. And so with that, I'd be happy to entertain any questions or alternatives.
I'll bring it to the council for any questions. Mr. Moody?
You know, and I would add that this is, you know, it's not something light, you know, this is, this is a major, major thing, and I'm, by being quick here at the end of the meeting, this is, this is something that's major for the community, that the ad hoc committee has looked at, this is a real hindrance to growth right now that slows things down. And so by rescinding them, it's a, it's a major roadblock that, that developers and costs that have to be looked at, and how they're gonna be dealt with, and time delays as we work through them individually. And so, so this is, this is a substantial matter, and as the ad hoc committee and the mayor has requested this to be brought forward in a timely manner. And so I want, definitely want to emphasize that this is open-for-business policy that is very substantial, even though we're moving through it rather quickly.
Thank you for that, I do agree, as one of the, as a department head back in 2000 I do agree, as one of the, as a department head back in 2005, I do remember the necessity of trying to get these growth policies in place, and I think it was important, because there really wasn't a lot of framework around how that was going to happen. But as you mentioned, Mr. Moody, here we are 16, 17 years later, and we still have the same, same thing. Some definitely not where we need them to be, and I'm going to turn it over to the vice mayor, who's very skillfully led the development impact fee committee, and this was an issue. So, Mr. Vice Mayor, I would turn it to you first here for any comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Moody, you hit the nail on the head. These things served their purpose 16 years ago, and as we walked through it, we need to look and see if new growth policies are needed, and if they are, they are relevant. And as the ad hoc committee was working through things, I want to say thank you to our partners, Sabuca being one of the ones. We, as I said, we control what we can control, and we, you know, address the others, but we have no control over them. Sabuca came to us and lowered the levy impact fee and stuff, which was awesome. We did everything to get this community in pro-growth mode, because we were stagnant. And I hope that continues. And as I've been gone the last couple of weeks, my phone did blow up while I was gone, and apparently one agency that we have to partner with was talking about going the opposite direction and raising fees when it comes to housing and such. And I hoped, or I hope personally that that doesn't come to pass, because we're trying to grow our community and our quality of life, and I'm hoping they can find a different avenue to meet their funding needs. But because we're not getting anything as far as growth, or we had not, but we've seen growth take off this past year, and it's been because of the work of this council as a whole, because the ad hoc is just too. But then we saw the need and filled, and Ben, thank you, and thank you to the entire staff for working with us. But definitely, our partners, most of them are heading in the right direction, and I thank them.
Thank you. Questions?
Through the mayor. I agree with, as we have explored the impact fees and the bog tax and everything else in development, looking at our community development services, the work that you're doing, Ben, within your team, and then with Dave now, our city manager, new guy on board with us, it really makes sense. It really does make sense, in particular because some of these growth policies are not in our jurisdiction. The policy decisions are not, we're not, so I'm kind of baffled how that was decided 15 years ago, but hey, let that go, we are here, so I support this.
Nothing to add.
The only thing I would add is just to echo the sentiment from, from the vice mayor is that, on behalf of the entire council, Vice Mayor Shaw, myself, the city manager, have been meeting with the other affected parties that, that do have the ability to levy impact fees. And again, we will call out Sabuca, Sutter Butte Flood Control Agency, as an agency that we have representation on, that went back to the, back to the drawing boards and said, hey, you know what, we can do something here, and are executing on that. You know, we're in the process of a traffic study, and we'll take a look at that ourselves, plus what we've already done. I don't begrudge any of the other agencies to try to fund what they, or try to, you know, develop funding mechanisms that they need. At the same time, though, I think that you have to take a look at the total, the total picture. There's a lot of, there's a lot of funding coming to local governmental agencies, and you know, it doesn't, I think it's prudent to take a look and see where you can potentially lessen the impact on the developers to bring things like housing to our community, which is so badly needed. Bring commercial development to our community, so there are jobs which are so badly needed. I know it's a balance, and there's a sweet spot there, but it's there if you really want to take a look at it, and I thank my colleagues for at least having the forethought to take care of that at the city level, and I, you know, will continue to challenge those other folks out there to, to look and do the same. With that, any public comments on this item? You're the remaining person, not a darn thing.
No, I have no questions. I heard just field the other night at the Republican Central Pavilion, I have all four.
Anything online?
No public comment.
Okay, council?
Through the mayor. Move to adopt a resolution rescinding Resolution Number 05-049, city growth policies for the city sphere of influence, including development of specific and master plans. Prior to annexing to the city with the finding that the 2005 policies are no longer applicable and/or necessary with the associated SEQA determination for SEQA Section 15601 Sub B3.
Second.
All right, have a motion by Vice Mayor Shaw, second by Councilman Kirchner. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Not hearing any, that motion passes unanimously. Item 19, future agenda items, this opportunity to discuss with city manager about items that came up in the meeting this evening that you would like to have brought back to the council at a later date. Are there any comments relating to the agenda items that, that may have come in during the meeting?
No public comment.
Okay, anything from the council that you would like to ask Mr. Vaughn to pursue? Okay, hearing none. Reports and communications, first up is Councilmember Espendola.
Thank you, mayor, you went in the order today. Thanks. Okay, very quickly, attended, I know, keep me, keep us on our toes, thank you. Attended the Feather River Air Quality Management District, we had a fiscal and policy committee meeting, and as mentioned, there is plenty of funding in the Feather River Air Quality. There's potentially a huge amount of surplus of money that could be within the prevy of the board, so that's something else for us to consider. The, I attended a regional water authority, a special board meeting for a resolution for concerned of water levels more in the Sacramento area and unnecessarily here in the Yuba City area. My colleague, Councilwoman Harris and I were at the Sutter Butte Flood Control, and just to echo what you said, mayor, when, in our assignments of committees this year, had a discussion with our CEO, Michael, and so he was very interested in finding ways to, to benefit, you know, with reductions of impact fees. Funding there also seems to be in really good, good standing. We are in the process of evaluating his job and, and looking at that, and we will make decisions at the next meeting. The last thing that I want to share is tomorrow, we're back here again, we're doing our goals and priority workshop. If you haven't signed up, get ready, sign up, get online, if not, come in person, 10:00 AM tomorrow. For me, that's bright and early. For some folks, it could be the, you know, nightfall going in, but I will, I'm happy to see everyone join us tomorrow, so thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Councilmember Kirchner.
Through the mayor, thank you. I'd like to begin by saying it's great to have everybody here tonight, this week. It's like having the, getting the band back together. Feels good. So on the 5th of, 5th of May, Chief Alexander, it was nice enough to put on a Stop the Bleed training here in the council chambers, and that was very informative on how to stop bleeding. It was essentially, I guess, first aid on steroids, but it was very informative, and I'd like to thank Chief Alexander for putting that on for us. On the 8th of May, right out here on the city property, I was invited and attended the 45th anniversary gathering of the 1976 bus crash memorial, and that was very impactful for me, because my brother just missed that, that trip, but there was a pretty large gathering for that. And for anyone who's interested, on the 21st, which is the actual anniversary, the 45th anniversary, there will be a gathering in Martinez. On the 11th, on a separate note, I was invited by Wieland High School, the CTE program, to conduct mock interviews with, with freshmen, which was, which was, which was fun. That evening, I was invited to attend the Gold Sox meeting, the ownership meeting. The Yuba Sutter Gold Sox will start their season this year. They're open for business. First game will be June 3rd. They are declaring 25% capacity, which essentially means 1,000 people are allowed to go in, which I think they can accommodate. Excuse me. The 12th, the mayor and I attended the police ceremony in front of the police station, recognizing the fallen officers for this community and others. I'm really glad I attended that. I've got to say, that was the first time I've ever attended that, and it was very impactful for me, seeing, I mean, when you have, when you have the widow of a fallen officer and her two children approaching the stand, place a, to place a flower, I don't know how you don't, how you're not affected by that, but I was, I was glad I went to that. Also on the 12th was the Gilcizer Drainage District, Sutter County Board meeting. We did approval of minutes, approval of expenditures, and consideration of the 21, 22 budget. Other than that, there's not much to report. On the 13th, I attended the mosquito, mosquito meeting, not much to report, there's no, luckily we don't have any reports of West Nile in the area, so really not to, nothing to report there, other than they did, they do have some new employees for, for the summer, they brought in for the summer, sexual harassment training they're moving forward with, and they were able to sell off some of their surplus equipment, and they received a check for $30,000. And lastly, yesterday, right out here was police promotion, and I hope I don't butcher this name, Sam Eschman, was promoted to commander. Michelle Brazil, Brazil, was promoted to lieutenant, and David Santana was promoted to sergeant, and it was, it was nice to meet those individuals and congratulate them on all their hard work. And with that, back to you, mayor.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Harris.
All right, the opportunity, I attended a two-day event hosted by our fire department called Fire Ops 101. It was very interesting and informative. They sent a bunch of us through the rigors, some classroom stuff, like learned a lot there, and also the rappelling out of the building, and got to cut up a car, cut the roof off of BMW, which I was glad I got to do that to a BMW, and go into a burning container and watch all that happen with the full workup on. So that was quite interesting, and I appreciated that. It was very informative and productive. You know, you know, it's really, was, was such a nice attempt, and you know, I really appreciated their, their, their support. Did a, while doing that, I had to break away for about a half hour. I did a video, a live Facebook thing through SECOG in support of bike awareness, or bike, I have Bike Month in my notes, but it's called something else. But basically getting people out of the cars, onto their bikes, for a multitude of reasons. Did the, as Councilmember Espendola mentioned, we did a Chamber of Commerce membership drive. Everyone got together, we hired, you reminded me of Richard Simmons, some cheerleader guy that got everybody motivated, and, but he was quite effective. We broke a record, I think it was $126,000, which is a record for California, and even more, more new members than that. For Sutter Butte Flood Control, we'd have a, you know, Grace already mentioned, we did, we had preliminary approval from the budget. Also, just adding to what she had already mentioned, was there's going to be a sediment removal project at the Yuba City Boat Dock beginning soon. Also, something in the works up in Live Oak, the Feather River, however, that's, I believe Yuba City is going to be first. SECOG, the routine meeting, we have another one this coming Thursday, but we had an update on the Metropolitan Transportation Plan slash Sustainable Community Strategy. Basically, it's a way to combine transportation planning, housing planning, along with environmental concerns. They also asked me to be a panel member, actually, not even a panel member, a guest with their youth leadership academy, specific to those youth who are in high school here in Yuba City. They asked me several questions about how I got to into politics, what our role is, what we do, what your background is, any advice for them in the future as future leaders.
Did I give them the right advice?
I did. I gave them the CHP applications, we're good to go.
Don't tell them what the time is.
Yeah, yeah. Let me see here. That's okay. Trying to be fast here. That is it. I'll just, I'll just forego. And then, of course, I attended the PD swearing-in promotional ceremony here, which was an honor to be a part of, and congratulations to all three of our new promoters. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My report tonight's going to be really short, and I hope that I can make it through it. Last two weeks, the city gave me what I needed, and that was time away. So my first is a thank you to my fellow council members. You guys know that I received some very unfortunate news right before we came back into open session at the last meeting, and you guys showed me tremendous respect by holding over items to this meeting. And just three years ago, that type of respect was not in these chambers, so I want to say thank you. Additionally, you guys stepped up, covered any and all things that needed to be going on, so that I could take care of my family. Thank you to Dave Vaughn and the entire city team, all of our department heads, city attorney, Shannon, you and your firm. It's real simple, thank you. The overwhelming support, prayers, thoughts, compassion, it's really been overwhelming for the last week or so. Many of you can tell, I'm probably, sometimes don't seem like I'm hitting on all cylinders right now, I'm still processing. But I've got a great team around me, great friends, great colleagues, and so simply put, tonight, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Quick list here, budget ad hoc, kind of a wrap-up meeting this morning, in preparation for presenting to you as a full council in a workshop. I think that staff has done a pretty excellent job of listening over the last two years to the ad hoc committee's questions and addressing concerns, et cetera. So we'll have something that Spencer Morrison, Lynn Hale, and the city manager will be presenting out in front of us here, and I think you'll find the information helpful as we have to go through the tough process of allocating and determining what we're going to spend our money on in the next fiscal year. Did approve, attended the Gilcizer, as mentioned, also LAFCO. We approved a budget for LAFCO for the upcoming year. There was a motion to change the meeting time to 2 o'clock. We did begin the discussion about Newcombe Ranch, which is the, a portion of the Bog Stewart Master Plan. There was a fair amount of discussion on the tax share. I could get into more detail individually, if you want to talk to me about that. It was not a big deal, but there were some questions in regards to CSAG, which is the the community service area that the fire department is funded out of. We did begin also the discussion, and this is of interest to you and I, the Gilcizer Drainage, they need to do a tax share agreement as well for this. I don't know that that was on their work plan, but we'll work through with the city manager, make sure, I think he's got that now. Also, they're getting ready to do a fire municipal services review. It's a standard operation of, of LAFCO to do that periodically, and they're It's a standard operation of, of Lafco to do that periodically, and there are some concerns. Thankfully, they don't necessarily directly impact us, but the Robbins Sutter Basin Fire Department apparently is struggling and challenged with staffing down in that area. Making slow but steady headway on fireworks show that county is in, we're in, I know Marysville's in, so we're still, still out doing a little bit of fundraising. I need to, again, I know that there are some city costs, so I would continue to ask that we know PD's costs and any other agency costs so that we can fundraise for those and get those covered. One of the things that I'm hopeful that we'll be able to bring back this year is the Fourth of July Parade, okay? So I don't, right now, there's just discussions about that, but more to come as we bring that, I think, very important unity event back, back to play if we're allowed to do so. Like to acknowledge Chief Landon for the police memorial. The, that, as Councilman Kirchner mentioned, it's always a very moving deal, and it's always so professionally done, and I think that might have been one of the largest attendances, I think it was very well attended. I apologize for not being able to make the badge swearing. I had some medical things going on yesterday, so, but I intend, I've talked with Sam Eschman, I've talked with Michelle, I have not talked to Mr. Santana, and I'll do that. I would like to close the meeting in memory of Dave's father. You know, I don't know that we ever had the opportunity to meet the man, but, you know, from what I gather, he was a good guy, and, and I, I feel for you, sir. You are our colleague, and we had your, we had your back, and we were thinking of you. And it's good to have you back, and if there's anything we can do through this next phase, let us know. With that, we'll go ahead and adjourn this meeting.